Okay, it's 9:30. I'll give everybody 60 seconds to find their seat. Have you talked to Fran?
Yes.
Doing better?
He is.
Good. He did? Wow! I didn't until you pointed. I had a note here that he was going to appear.
It's magical.
What's magical?
Appearing.
Okay, we will call the September twenty first Volusia County Council meeting to order. Again, we're glad that you're, you're, you are here. And we're going to start with the invocation by Pastor Tim Howes with Oak Hill Church of the Nazarene. And I'll just remind everybody that if your particular faith has, would like to be included, just get ahold of Carissa Green. Carissa, raise your hand. And because this is, this is an equal opportunity moment. So if you would, if you care to stand for the invocation, please stand and then just remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Please bow our heads. Gracious Father in heaven, we thank you for this opportunity to come together for this council meeting. Help us to set our differences aside and seek what is best for our community and also that your will will be done. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we make decisions today, and we thank you for each and everyone who is here participating in this meeting. You have blessed us with leaders who desire the very best for all of Volusia County and its communities. Loving Father, we thank you most of all for being here in our midst. Let your presence be made known in here today. And thank you, Father, for we know that you are always here to support your people and their concerns. We give you thanks and praise in all things, and in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry?
Here.
Ms. Post?
Here.
Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Ms. Wheeler?
Here.
Ms. Gertman?
Here.
Mr. Brower?
Here. So let the record reflect that we do have a quorum physically present on the dais. But I do need a motion from somebody on the council to one of you that are present to recognize that council member Fred Lowry is participating and voting virtually due to an extraordinary circumstance involving an illness, serious medical discondition or physical disability. Can I get a motion?
The motion, second.
Everybody motioned. Motion by Johnson, second by Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero unless you, did you vote, Fred?
No, but thank you.
We're glad you're feeling better, glad that you could, can participate virtually. And I hope that you continue to heal.
Going good.
All right. Is it just these three? Did you collect any more? Okay, we'll go to public participation as I call your name. If you would come forward and speak clearly into the microphone, you will have three minutes. And just state your name and your city of residence so we know where you're from. Keith Chester.
To the frontline war veterans, first responders, healthcare workers, and corrections officers, I want to apologize for all who have ridden your coattails for personal gain and political expediency. I ensure all of the hollow platitudes have done little to help you with your struggles. I want to thank the janitors who keep our facilities clean, the trash collectors for collecting all that we discard, the maintenance workers who keep our buildings safe, the lawn care workers who work hard to keep our lawns nicely manicured, the daycare workers who look after our young ones, the retail workers who make our shopping experiences more pleasant, the restaurant workers who feed us and provide us with nice experiences, the construction workers who build our buildings, roads, bridges, and infrastructure that allows the rest of us to have a much more pleasant life, the people who work in the fields and on farms ensuring we have an abundance of food to eat, the factory workers who ensure we have the products we enjoy, and the forgotten people who work hard and contribute to society. And I want to say I am sorry that some in our society do not value you as they should. Many will say, if they want more money and benefits, they should better themselves. I say they are wrong because without all of you, the rest of us would not enjoy the lives we have here. Just like most of those who are sitting up there on that dais in front of me, all of you deserve a living wage, paid time off, and quality healthcare. All of you sitting on that dais have been pretty fortunate in life and are enjoying life's bounties, and you have had a better life on the backs of others. I am here today to ask that you not raise taxes on the working poor and that you start saying no. No to all of the corporate handouts, no to the vast number of nonprofits with their hands out, no to the fancy fundraiser dinners, no to taxpayers paying for any more travel expenses for members of this council, and no to any more contracts that allow us to save another dime on the backs of the working class. If you really want to help poor people, you will cut out all of the giveaways, ensure everyone who works for or provides ongoing services for the county is provided with a living wage, paid time off, and healthcare benefits, and attract businesses through a bottom-up approach by offering scholarships for educational opportunities in the areas of the most need in Volusia County. And if you care about our first responders and correction officers, as you claim to, you will ensure they are being paid well, they are staffed well, they are trained well, they are equipped well, and they are not working over fifty hours per week, so they are well rested. Volusia County needs to get its priorities in order before even considering raising our taxes. There needs to be a citizen-driven plan in place for our future that includes all of the various sources of funding and a needs assessment. The current way of doing things is too fragmented and very ineffective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Suzanne Schreiber?
Suzanne Schreiber, Ormond Beach, Florida, representing Dream Ring Volusia today. And I wanted to answer your questions pertaining to the water goat that came up a few meetings ago. The water goat that's located in Holly Hill was paid for by a grant through Surfing's Evolution and Preservation. Water goats are custom-made to fit the canals where they're placed by Water Goat. That grant was for three thousand three hundred dollars, and it covered that device being made and delivered. Mark with Water Goat does not live locally. He lives on the other side of the state. There are actually three in our county, the one in Holly Hill, there's one in Edgewater, and there's one in New Smyrna Beach. All of them, to my knowledge, have either been paid for by grants or sponsorships. The major difference here is I'm going for them in every city location I can. I actually asked the Surfing's Evolution and Preservation to set aside grants for their next budget season, which is next year, and I've already spoken with Mark. They know what I'm trying to achieve in our county, and they're perfectly happy to do it. In addition to the one in Holly Hill, I met with Mark. He drove over more than once. But I met with him in the middle of the state, and he donated probably about six hundred dollars in supplies to make sure the one in Holly Hill was successful. I don't know that he did that with the others. I wouldn't know. The, this process is with Water Goats. Water Goats are already proven. It's not that we're, we don't need to prove them. I guess maybe as a nonprofit, we need to prove ourselves as far as maintaining the one in Holly Hill, and we've been doing that, but they've already been proven. The one in Edgewater's been in well over a year. They are out of their timeline right now. And I believe the one at the Marine Discovery Center probably is too. So you have reputable nonprofits, you know, with them. I hope that I'm able to work with the county because as it stands right now, I'm contacting cities and trying to figure out the canal systems myself. And I'm pretty intuitive and can figure out a lot of things, but it does take longer trying to figure it out on my own. I can tell you that Port Orange has already come back to me and said the canal, B nineteen, B twenty-three, and Halifax Canal, those canals are county and that they could probably benefit from having one. I don't know what B nineteen and B twenty-three is. I'm going to be honest, but I'm sure I will figure it out. So I would appreciate any help that the county gives, and I can tell you that they will be paid for by grants. Thank you.
Paul Richardson?
Morning, council, and I'm glad that Dr. Lowry is feeling better. Hope he returns to us next meeting. And anyway, I wish I could come to talk about county issues, like maybe the budget, or trees, or grass, or canals. I wish I could say something, talk to you something about fun like I did last meeting about doing a Fourth of July committee for our two hundred fiftieth anniversary of Poor America. But frankly, there is a lot going on in our country. We have runaway inflation, high gas prices. We have a border crisis going on where tens of thousands of people are crossing the Mexican border over into our countries. Unfathomable from us, far so far away from it, can think of. The feds are withholding medication from certain states. And luckily, our governor had the will to go out and buy extra medicine from someone else for this. But the idea of them withholding medication is just insane. And of course, a couple council meetings ago, I came here to condemn the Biden administration over the botched Afghanistan withdrawal. We all wanted to get out of Afghanistan. I don't know anybody who didn't. We've been there twenty years, but, and lost a lot of treasure and blood over it. And it was, we needed to get out of there as long as there wasn't a botched withdrawal. But of course, top to bottom, the Biden administration botched that completely. Then we learned last weekend, Friday, in a Friday late drop, that the drone strike that killed a supposed terrorist, ISIS terrorist, was actually an aid worker, Afghan aid worker that had worked with us as an ally. They tracked him, they targeted him, and then they killed him along with ten other people, including seven children. Now, no one is going to, is going to be forced to resign, fired, or court-martialed over this tragedy. It's disgusting. No one is taking responsibility for anything that's going on on the federal level. It seems like it's either incompetence or willful malice that's going on right now. And again, I call on the resignation, President Biden, me personally, not you, of course, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But I personally call on the resignation of President Biden, the Vice President, Secretary of State, the Secretary of Defense, and all Joint Chiefs of Staff, including the Chief himself, the Joint Chief, the whole body. It's outrageous is what's going on. I wish I could talk something better, but I have to get this off my chest. And I'm glad you guys and the world is listening to me on this. Thank you very much.
Jeremy Karaginos?
Mr. Chair, council, good morning. My name is Jeremy Karaginos, president of the Volusia County Professional Firefighters Association, Local three five seven four. I'd like to thank the few members of the council for personally reaching out to me on the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. Thank you for letting me know how important your firefighters truly are to this county. Small gestures like this truly help with our morale. Thank you to Mr. Pozo and Chief Bailey for the ambulance distributed for the fire trucks to honor our three hundred and forty-three that we lost that day. I'd like to recap a few of my messages over the past couple of months. Your dual-certified firefighters, paramedics continue to collectively work thousands of forced hours beyond their normal schedule to keep our community safe, and we're truly proud to do so. The fire rescue overtime budget is approaching two and a half million dollars, and without a shift relief factor, it will continue to grow. Fire rescue staffing levels are still far below the staffing levels we had in two thousand and seven before the last economic crisis decreased our fire fund budget. And I fear without locking in a minimum of three firefighters on each truck, history will repeat itself. Fire rescue's budget was reduced by one million dollars due to last year's rollback, which could have meant twelve firefighters to assist with the increased demand we have seen over the last ten years, not just this pandemic. We received no CARES money, no ARPA funds, to assist with our staffing or aging community fire stations. I can only hope that we will at least be allowed to utilize the sheriff's twenty million dollar ARPA-funded EVA course without any charge from the fire fund. With that being said, the implications that reducing the general fund will have on our fire rescue department, the foreseeable cuts I've experienced during my sixteen years due to decreased property values, I support Mr. Reckonwald's budget as proposed and a stabilized general fund. He and Miss Conshion have and continue to slowly chip away at our staffing levels as outlined over the next five years. Unlike other counties, I do appreciate Mr. Reckonwald, Mr. Pozo, and our fire chief do not feel the only solution to this pandemic is to not call nine one one. Although we lack a work-life balance, your dual firefighters, paramedics are here for our community's safety, no matter what the emergency is. Please do not keep treating our fire EMS system as the dusty heirloom it is, handing down the problems from council to council. Forgo the PowerPoints and hold a true workshop to improve our community's safety. I have hopes and confidence in this council's ability to address all the needs of this community. In closing, my union has open arms to any municipality fire department and our EMS department for consolidated, efficient service. Thank you.
Thank you. John Nicholson?
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. Couple of things. One, with regard to Afghanistan. He said he never met anybody who wanted to stay there. I did. We've been in Germany now seventy-five years after the war, and there's a reason why we're there. We're in Japan seventy-five years after the war, and there's a reason why we're in Japan. We should have stayed in the same capacity in Afghanistan because there's a problem in that region. All right, it may not be Russia, it may not be China, but there is a problem there. Enough said. Secondly, on Oak Ridge, I know you have the Oak Ridge Bridge is county, but I don't know if Oak Ridge is county roadway. So I'm asking at least Billy to take a look at that road, drive down it. They're beautifying it. Personally, I don't think it's attractive, but the ten-foot lanes bother me. I don't, they're going to drop the speed limit five miles an hour, and they're going to shrink to ten-foot lanes, which I don't like. They have a bike lane for three quarters of it, and it stops dead for no reason. They put a planner right in front of it, so the person on the bike has to back up to find an entrance to a business to get onto a sidewalk, or they can go into the ten-foot lane, which is ridiculous. Then they're going to put another bump out on just east of Grandview so that all four lanes have to confine into one little location that is backed up from the traffic light, which is not long enough, which doesn't have four lights on the corner. People coming out of the new Grand Hotel have no light. They can only make a right. So there's a couple of problems with that. Plus, the sidewalks are less than four feet wide, which is not standard. And lastly, evac, and I'm sure you all saw this. I can't believe we're the only county in the state of Florida that hasn't done this. I know it sounds great, but the devil is in the detail. But we have to take a look at it. Union, non-union, pay scale, whatever. It says we're going to save money. I like that a lot. All right? It says it's a better use of our staffing. I like that a lot. The idea that the ambulances can go where the cities, where the problems are, I like that a lot. The idea that it's been brought up here that there are areas, especially in the northeast corner of the county, that it's a problem with ambulances, all right? If this solves that, I like that a lot. So I'm asking you not necessarily to pass it, but at least to look at it because it sounds good. But again, the devil is in the details, so I would ask you just take a moment to talk among yourselves or talk with staff or whatever. But it's a big article in the paper, but they are not always true. So please do your due diligence, and if it helps, please do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's the, the end of public participation, okay? I thought you were bringing more. So we will move to the consent agenda. Before we do that, I just want to make a quick announcement for those that are here in case you're waiting for items that will be coming. for those that are here, in case you're waiting for items that will be coming up. Item number nine and 10 have been pulled from the agenda and advertised to come back on October 5th. So if you're waiting for those, you've got, I wouldn't wait till October 5th, come back October 5th. But just to let everybody know, item nine and 10 have been pulled. So item one is our consent agenda, and I understand that Council would like to pull letters F and G just for discussion. We are moving items U, V, and W to the October 5th meeting as well. And then FF and GG will be pulled for comment, and I would like to also pull J for a vote by the Council. So I'm not sure who requested to pull F and G, but if you want to light this thing up here and let me know, or just go ahead.
Mr. Chair, it was requested by several Council to just highlight this item. So Donna.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of Council, Donna Butler, Community Services Director. So F and G, yes, F and G are two sources of funding for our LIHEAP program. For those of you that are unaware, LIHEAP pays for utility assistance for those that can't pay their power bills. So the first item, went to G. The first item provides $926,000 and change. This is ARPA funding for LIHEAP. The other program provides almost 2.2. This is our regular LIHEAP program dollars that we regularly get from the state of Florida. Combined, though, it's about $3.1 million, and approximately 6,400 families will receive benefits from this. So it's always nice to highlight the good things that we're doing in our community.
Thank you. Double F, double G.
Good morning, Tad Kaysbeer, County Engineer. Item FF is a change order to the Lemonbluff project. We had some issues with a section of the retaining wall on both sides of the boat ramp. We had driven a vast majority of that retaining wall, and then as we were driving the last portions of it, we had some soils conditions that'll cause the two middle sections on both sides to flex a little bit. Unfortunately, those are no longer viable sections, so we have to go back and retrofit those and redo that section. That's what this change order is for, the cost of the engineering, to investigate and identify the correct solution, and then to have the contractor go ahead and perform the work. So we've already identified what needs to be done. We just need to get the contractor moving forward.
I just wanted to point out that, yeah, we talked about this yesterday in the agenda meeting, and it looks like the county staff went right to work, because it says that this will be paid for from the Florida Boater Improvement Funds instead of the general fund. I just wanted to, I wanted to make that clear, and thank you all for going to work on that yesterday. Well, probably not just yesterday. And then you're going to do GG as well?
GG is the contract with GAI Consultants, the firm that we selected for phases two and three of the last segment of the River to Sea Loop over on the west side of Deland. It basically goes from the intersection of Grand, Beersford, Old New York, north of 44 is phase two, and then north of that up to the end of the trail at the south end of Grand, where it makes that eastward turn. So that's phase three. This is the contract for them to go ahead and do the work. Dollar amount was $848,000, not to exceed. One of the items that you have on later on in the agenda is the rezoning. This contract takes into account the aspect of that consultant, that developer, constructing and designing the portion of the trail through their portion of the development. So we have shifted some of the funding in there, and that's why it's not to exceed. Or assuming that continues to move forward, gets approved, and move forward, we would shift their work, their design efforts for this consultant, down to the intersection there at Grand, Beersford, and Old New York, because that sorely needs improvements, because it also includes that spur of life.
This is also being paid for by grants?
Yes, sir.
That's worth noting.
Sorry.
That's all right. Really not correcting you, but this is Budget Day. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Donna Butler, are you still here? I wanted to pull J for a vote, not because I disagree with it. I'm almost positive that this will be an affirmative vote, but I just, I had some questions about it. This is our Community Cultural Grant Awards that we've been doing for 20 years? How long?
Well, it's at least been 30, since I've been here 30 years. I use the program.
I just had a few questions. When was the last time that the Community Cultural Grant was thoroughly reviewed, the way that we do it, the procedures, the application?
I'm going to let Tim answer that, but my understanding is they do it annually, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tim Bailey, Parks Recreation Culture Director. And yeah, after each annual submission, they meet as a group and go over the application and make recommendations on any changes. And then if they're substantive, they're brought back before this body for approval.
Is that, are those meetings and deliberations available to the public?
Yes.
Okay. How do we find those?
They're online.
Where online? I want to be specific, because I've got people asking me about it.
Yeah, and it's on our Parks Recreation Culture page, Select Cultural Grant. You go to that section, and then they advertise on, online for the next public meeting. Plus, Community Services also puts out a release that the next cultural council meeting is scheduled, and where it's at, and what time. We have one coming up here on Friday, and so it'll be here in chambers. So all that, all the folks that are interested, come and attend.
Has there been a time when we, in those yearly meetings, that the application process, the procedures that are used, the requirements, have been updated or changed?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. When I look at it, I see that, to me, it seems like it's a little bit out of balance, the kind of departments, nonprofits that are receiving funds. And one of the, one of the things that stood out to me, and this is really what I want the Council to consider, is that right now, it seems like funding is based solely on the applicant's annual budget. Is that true?
Annual operating budget.
Right. And if you compare some of the different people receiving funds on this list, like the Athens Theater, they're going to have a much larger budget, because they sell tickets at $35 apiece to come. And then you look at Pioneer Art Settlement, that has probably a dozen historical buildings there that they maintain, that doesn't make them any money, that costs them money. And they don't get that recovered by field trips, by students. So I'm just wondering if there could be more equity, if we could enter some metrics into that, that looked at the number of people served, who the people are. If you look at the Pioneer Art Settlement, they're going to receive $21,622. Athens Theater is going to receive $69,233, and the African American Museum is going to receive $3,897. I'm just, I'm just not sure that's fairly awarded over the 20 years. And then here's the last thing I want to say. Well, the Athens Theater, selling tickets and getting this money, unless you correct me, I don't believe that since they started, one of the things they were supposed to do was replace the historic molding inside of the building. And I do know that taxpayers have already paid for the infrastructure to have the orchestra pit that's supposed to elevate. We paid for it. I don't think that's ever been done, and I'm just, I think that should be considered. Do you have, you have an update on that?
Those are echo grants, so totally separate. We can bring that in front of the Echo Advisory Board if you, but totally separate from the operating grants. So for the history of the cultural council grants, it's not just about what their budget is. There are a lot of factors. Do they have the administrative capacity? Not only are they serving the types of programs, but there's a whole list of checkboxes that have to be met for them to be, one, eligible, and then, two, receive funding. But you'll also see the amount that they requested, and the receiving a portion of what they requested. So there's a spreadsheet that goes into all that. We're happy to look at that, review it, and come back if, you know, the Council wants to hear changes to that. But at this point, it's somewhat based on what their budget is, and then what they ask, and then a portion of that is, nobody receives 100% of what they've asked for, because there's just not enough funding for that.
Don't go away. But just as a side, I also noticed that everybody that applied got some kind of an award. I'm not against Athens. I think it's a local gem. You said those two things were, the molding and the pit were echo grants that were already awarded.
Correct. So we can go back and do a review of the echo grant, and it provided funding to accomplish those things, and go back and figure out the status of that, but that's separate. Those were construction or capital items. This is only operating, so done separately.
But it still leads me to, again, it's Budget season. It leads me to wonder, echo grants are still taxpayer money. And I think it was quite a long time ago that that grant was given, and we haven't, the money wasn't spent according to the way that taxpayers thought it would. To me, that's an issue.
We'll be happy to go back and review it.
Good. Thank you. One other thing before you go. What is our culture here in Volusia County? Because I think that's changed over 30 years. How much more prevalent and used as the African American Museum, does our environment come into play? I think the environment of Volusia County is, has become part of our culture. And if we look at the Marine Discovery Center, they are providing art classes, science exhibits, and yet they're, they're not allowed to apply for these grants as a, to my knowledge, as a discovery center. And yet, the state of Florida has recognized cultural organizations, environmental cultural organizations several years ago. This Council could also change that with a vote, that the Marine Discovery Center could be, could be included. So my whole point in saying all this, and it's only $612,000, and we get kind of hardened to, if it's not $1.5 million, we hardly notice it. I think we need to notice the half millions and the 600 millions. And the culture, we have some great museums and great programs. I don't want them cut. It's going to be approved here in this vote. But after we vote for it, I would ask the Council for a motion and a second to allow you to, and Tim, to look at maybe updating the parameters that we use to add other metrics besides the operating budget and... Coming up with the big guns.
And I don't even think it takes a motion. We're happy to review all of the guidelines, have the cultural council review whether or not science should be a part of it. Just to be clear, though, the MDC, the cultural programs that were provided there, were actually provided by a nonprofit that is receiving assistance. So they weren't actually putting them on. They were hosting, which is great, because it brings people into your organization that may not come. So they came for an art event, but might learn about the environment and the process. So it's kind of a win-win. But we're happy to look at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I like things getting done that quick. Can I have a motion, then, to approve item J for $611,758?
So moved.
I think the motion was made by Barb, and Billy Wheeler seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Donna. And that brings us to item two.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
We need to go ahead and approve the rest of the...
Oh, we do. We should actually vote on the consent agenda, shouldn't we?
Yeah, we did a great job going through those pieces, but we got, don't forget the rest of them.
Okay. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, other than J and the two that were moved to October 5th? You seconded? Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. How do we know when Fred's voting? Thumbs up, okay. Okay. Now we can move to item two, renewal of workman's compensation and liability policies.
Good morning, Chairman, County Council staff. Dana Page Pender, Human Resources. I'm here today requesting approval of our workers' compensation and liability policies for both the county and VOTRAN. The liability policies include excess liability policies, which help mitigate the impact on our self-insurance fund, should there be any large claims. While VOTRAN saw some decreases, the county saw increases in premiums of about 17%, resulting in an overall net increase of about 8%. With me today, I have Charles Spencer, Justin Anselmo, and Steve Farmer. Justin and Steve are from our broker of record, Brandon Brown, and Charles Spencer's our risk manager, if you have any questions about these policy renewals.
Thank you, Chair. When you say 17% and 8%, what is the, what do the numbers represent?
Charles Spencer, the county's risk manager. The 17% represents, represents the amount of increase for the policies that cover the county alone.
And what is that amount?
That is, let me see. That's 200, hold on one second, sorry. That's $364,639.54 over the prior year.
The 8% is?
Is the combination of...
About half of that?
Is the combination of, the 8% is the total increase between the premiums that are charged for the county and the premiums that are charged separately for VOTRAN combined.
And that number is?
$267,559.54 when you combine, when you combine them. That's on the bottom of the chart.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see any other questions. So I will call for a motion to approve the expenditure of $3,143,551 to pay for the renewal of the workman's compensation and liability policies.
So moved.
That was Ben. Motion by Ben Johnson, second by Barb Burtman. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you. Donna, you should probably just keep a seat on the front row. Item three, discussion of the emergency rental assistance programs.
Good morning again. So at our last meeting, you all had voted to move the ERA two program from a 12-month expenditure to a maximum of six months. And we asked that, well, we wanted to honor that if we could go back and find some more data and talk to you a little bit about some of the other things that the federal government requires and see if we might be able to come back to you. So here today, I'm going to present, can you change this slide, please? Thank you. Okay. So it was very interesting that you had asked for a six-month cap because we found that the majority of households were receiving six or less months of rental arrears, based on the previous data with ERA one. The average number of months of rental arrears is actually 2.83, so rounding that up, that's three months of an arrears. The percentage of ERA one applications in the first group exceeding six months of rental arrears is only 8%. So that means 92% of the folks that have applied are receiving less than six months of rental arrears. That's okay. All right. So we would like to continue to do that. So for folks that have no arrears or very few arrears, that's okay, it's working now. Okay. Then they would have six months total. So if you were one or two months in arrears, you'd have one or two months of arrears, and then moving forward, you'd have four or five months for a total of six, no matter what. But that's only if you had three or less. Oops, I did it the wrong way, sorry. Okay. So we would like to recommend that you all consider longer periods, up to nine months, for rental arrears. When arrears are greater than three months, the forward assistance would be limited to three months. So this would assist landlords. It is something that Councilmember Robbins has talked about a lot, that the landlords are also frustrated, and it helps the tenant, too. And one of the primary goals of this program is to prevent or reduce homelessness. In some cases, if they have not paid all of their arrears, the landlord is going to evict them. So the landlord is at risk at not receiving assistance if we only have, if they're six to nine months in arrears. But also, the tenant's going to have a very hard time moving forward in a new establishment. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of that information. We, you had asked before, so we've had 25, over 25 folks call us and tell us they have eviction notices right now. All of the landlords, except for two, were ready to go and were working on clearing those up. As soon as they were notified that we were going to provide assistance, they dropped the proceedings. Two of those that did not, one, the tenant just would not cooperate, and so they both agreed they wanted to be out of the program. One, the landlord was still going to evict, but because we were paying their arrears for this individual, they were not going to have an eviction on their record, which is, which is a really good thing. In addition, 82 landlords have submitted applications, and I had given you a little bit of incorrect information. All of them, when they come in, are missing tenant info. However, right now, 24 have provided the information, the tenants. We're going directly to the tenants now to try and get that information, and we're continuing to reach out. So hopefully, those tenants will continue to provide information and we can move their cases forward. So next, we'd like to talk about the eviction assistance recommendation. Still want to do the same number of months, so no more than 12 months in total, nine months of rental and utility arrears, and three months moving forward. However, there are additional eviction services that can be provided, and we're recommending, this doesn't have to be this amount, no more than $7,000 per household to cover these services. And this is what it can include. Rent or rental bonds, these are paid to the court to avoid that eviction order. Hotel costs, if they're evicted and they need to be in a hotel while they're getting ready to move into another location, we would, could pay those costs for a maximum of three months. Application or screening fees, every single time they apply to a new apartment complex or for a home, they have to pay application or screening fees. Rental security deposits, not to exceed two months of rental assistance, and a landlord incentive. So if a person has actually been evicted, is moving to a new location, we can actually pay one month to the new landlord to say, hey, we know this person had kind of a rough time in the past, but if you'll take them, we'll give you an additional one month. So those are the recommendations that we have for you, and we will be happy to answer any questions.
Barbara Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. So it sounds to me that the original program, up to 12 months, is basically what we need, and you already have all the flexibility to customize this based on what the needs are. The information you've discovered is, at least up to now, nobody has really needed much more than six months. But now we're in this issue with the eviction moratorium expiring, so you need the flexibility to be able to address the needs of each individual circumstance. So I'm not comfortable limiting to six months when it's recognizable that, you know, you need that flexibility to really be able to address the needs of people, to keep them from going into homelessness, and that is part of why these dollars exist. So I would recommend going to what the original program was, and that is up to 12 months.
And your recommendation was nine months?
It's a total of 12, but it's up to nine months in arrears.
In arrears.
And then three going forward. We do feel like, no matter what, we should, it's our recommendation that we have three months going forward. We really feel like just paying their arrears sets the person up for being evicted, anyway. So if we can help them move forward in the coming three months, if they're still unemployed or underemployed, we're hopeful that we can get them, you know, childcare assistance if they needed, or refer them to other agencies so that they might be able to become more successful during those three months. That, that would be our goal. If they are only owed, you know, six, we still, we want to get that back record clean so that no matter what, moving forward, their life is a little easier.
And we only have, what, would you say 8% that falls in that more than three, three months in arrears?
No, the 8% was no more than, one second. Percentage of ERA applications exceeding six months of rental arrears is 8%. For those exceeding nine months, it was 1%.
Okay.
So it's a very small number. And we've actually calculated, and this is very loosey-goosey because you just don't know how much someone's rent's going to be or how it's going to come in. But we really think that we're going to only serve for that 12 months, which is nine and three, probably five in the families. And then moving forward with the, up to nine months of utility, so that would be six and three, about 100, and the remainder would probably fall within the six months of assistance that you've already said that you wanted to do. So we're really working hard to maximize the number of families we can help, and we think we can do that.
And that is the reason why we're doing this. Unless there's any other conversation, I would like to make a motion to approve their recommendation of making it 12 months? Is that what we're saying?
Nine months in arrears and three months moving forward, plus, if you're willing to accept it also because it wasn't contemplated last time, the maximum of $7,000 for the eviction assistance.
And that would be included in my motion.
Is there a second on the motion before we have discussion?
Okay.
Seconded, motion made to approve the 12 months with a $7,000 additional, made by Wheeler, second by Gertman. The screen that we're looking at right now, we have, these are additional costs that go into the 7,000?
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to let, Heather Post has a question, and then I'll, I have one more for you. Heather Post?
Donna, do we know how many, how many of these we've helped already?
How many, the stats on how many in ERA one, or how many, how many of what?
We're voting on ERA two, so that's what I'm asking about.
So we haven't started the ERA two because we're waiting for a final decision from the council. But in terms of ERA one, do you have that data?
So when you're talking about it's only 1% and, you know, we can probably help five families, is that in ERA one or ERA two?
So these are in ERA one. Right now, any applications that we are reviewing that meet the qualifications of ERA one, we're going ahead and moving them over. So we received originally 1,409 applications. 867 of those were approved. Approximately 400 were denied, and then we're still, got about 105 that we're working through and working through because they still haven't submitted their information completely. So...
For ERA one?
ERA one.
Okay. But we're, this entire discussion is for ERA two?
Yes, ma'am.
And so I want to make sure that the stats you're giving us are in reference to ERA two. So the, the 1% and the nine months and all of that, is that in reference to ERA two or ERA one?
Stating the stats from the current program to guesstimate going forward what the trend we believe will be.
So those aren't the actual numbers? That's the trend from before?
That is the trend.
Okay.
That is the, what we believe will happen based on ERA one.
Okay. I would say I would have loved to have had the PowerPoint from this.
I sent it to you.
I was thinking, oh, that's what I was, did you get it?
I think I didn't get it.
Oh, okay. I just, I just asked my fellow colleague if she had it, and I thought she had said no. That's why I wanted to confirm. Okay. Sorry, obviously, I was out for emergency, so I didn't, didn't look at it, but, okay, that's fine.
Just a quick question. Before the question, I like what you've done here. There's nothing going to be more expensive than having people become homeless and just the, you know, tragedy of having that in our community. We don't, we don't need to add to it. So I think you've done really good work here. One of the things you mentioned was paying off arrears, and we can also help with, with three months rent. You said that people have a hard time running because of a rough time that they've had in the past. I'm just wondering if there's, and you and I have talked about this, are there things that, are there funds that the state is offering that we could provide for, to prevent rough times in the future, job training or childcare assistance? Probably childcare assistance. I hear of, you know, I would go to work if I had somebody that could watch my toddler or three children or whatever.
Absolutely. That's one of the number-one needs that we see with all of our clients, whether through this program or in our regular services that we provide for emergency assistance. So we regularly report or refer folks to the Early Learning Coalition. And then they go through an application process, and they can receive assistance to help them pay for their daycare, childcare, after-school, or early learning care. So it's very helpful and allows a lot of folks that maybe have a part-time job and say they could work full-time if they had that care, it gives them that additional support. And then in terms of job support, we always refer to the Career Source, encouraging them to apply there. We don't have any way that we can require that they do that, but we highly recommend that they do look for employment through Career Source.
So this is already, you're already giving that information to people that are applying for this program?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, we have, Billy Wheeler, go ahead.
I just was curious. You said there were like 400 that were rejected? 400 or 600?
Right, they were over income.
Oh, okay. That's, that was going to be my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have Barb Gertman with a question.
Sorry. How will it open back up again?
So once, now that you've approved this, we've got to train staff, and we've got to get everybody moving towards working on these applications. And then after we do that, we'll, we will announce the same way that we did before, get the news out to every nonprofit that helps folks. We'll put it out on, we'll do press releases and so forth, and we'll give them plenty of notice, and then we will send it out. Right now, for anyone that does call wanting this assistance, we're referring them to our Florida site. Simultaneously, the state is providing the same exact assistance to folks, so...
Have you gotten feedback on that support from the state?
We haven't.
Okay.
But we do, I will tell you, we do have a relationship, and we work to try and share our lists so that we're not accidentally double-dipping because we can't pay for the same period of time out of both grants.
Right. I just wonder if they're getting the help.
From what I've heard, they are. We're not getting calls back saying that, sorry, we can't get help.
That's, that's good to know. The other question was, last meeting, you said you needed help, and there was a suggestion of Mid-Florida Housing that had experience that may be able to be a support. Were you able to reach out to them?
So we did reach out to them. It's not something that we feel comfortable with at this time. We are responsible for ensuring that the dollars are spent exactly the way that the government requires and the, and what you all put on us for council. So we are, we're concerned about having others deal with that, and it actually adds a layer of work for us that, on top of what we're already doing. But we have hired six new staff, and on Friday, we'll finish application, interviews for the additional two that we need. So we're really close to being fully staffed.
I don't see any other questions, and there is a motion on the floor to approve the revised 12-month program with the additional $7,000 of assistance where needed. You have the, the motion and the second already? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries six to zero with one person out of the room.
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero with one person still out of the room. That will bring us to item number, I heard you, and you got credit for the vote, even out of the room, which is good for the public to know that we do have sound back there if somebody has to step out. Pardon me? You can't escape. But there are no cameras in the bathroom, are there? No?
Well, not yet.
Uh-oh, there goes the deputing. Okay. Item four, budget resolution appropriation of state housing initiative partnership program funds. Donna?
So this is another good news report, especially for those of you that remember that we got absolutely nothing last year, $0 through SHIP, and the legislature really came through this year and provided us with funding. So this contemplates $2.5 million from the SHIP funds, as we like to call them, and then an additional $820,000 in anticipated program income, and that will all go towards affordable housing in our community.
Is there anybody that would move to accept $3,386,976 of SHIP funds?
Move to approve.
I'll move.
We all will.
Can, motion made by the Volusia County Council. Let's give that one to Fred since he's, there's a delay, and second by, by Wheeler. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Donna. Item five, Career Source Flagler Volusia fiscal year 2021-22 budget. We are going to be asked to approve this, and before we turn it over to Cyrus, I'm going to let everybody know that this does not come out of our general fund.
That's, sir. And good morning, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
And the county council, Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Resources. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you Ms. Robin King. She is the president and CEO of Career Source Flagler Volusia, and she is... And she is seeking, or we are seeking, the approval of the budget, as you stated, Mr. Chair, for fiscal year 2021 and '22.
Good morning. Robin King, Career Source Flagler Volusia. If you remember, a couple of years back, we said we were going to start bringing our budget a little bit later so that we would really have a truer budget, knowing how much we were able to carry forward with those funds that have two years. This year, we did get quite a hit in our allocations. We're counter cyclical. The fewer people we have that are receiving food stamps, TANF, and other things, the less money we get. And hard to believe during this time period, but compared to the rest of the state, we fared fairly well. So overall, to kind of go, Mr. Chairman, to what you were asking about earlier, the wraparound services. So we adjusted some of our funds so that our operating costs are lower and our training dollars technically are lower because Daytona State College has quite, they've been getting grants from the Florida Department of Education so they can provide short-term, no-cost training. That way, we can step forward and do more around those wraparound services. So we're doing more around childcare, transportation assistance. And something we call needs-related payments is something we'll be starting with the next semester. And that is where we actually pay, we're not supposed to call it a stipend, but it's a stipend per hour. And it would not equal more than they would get if they were getting unemployment. And one of the things that we need to get the word out is if someone is receiving unemployment and they have to do those job search pieces, in lieu of job search, they can go to one of our approved training programs. So that's the, what we're getting out. That, along with the kinds of services that was discussed in the previous two agenda items, we really support and help blast all that information out to the community. So again, 100% of our funds are federal. It passes through the state. So we have our agreement with the Department of Economic Opportunity and this is the budget we bring before you before we send it up to them. I'm happy to take any questions.
Barb Gertman?
No questions. Just wanted to speak to the excellent work that you've done in the community. And I'm just, I'm proud to be on the board. Really proud of the youth employment, the creative youth employment program created and the impact on the community that you've had. And just the creativity that you've brought during the pandemic, still being able to reach out and provide a level of service. And it's just amazing what you've been able to do.
We did increase our youth program there and looking forward to that. We actually are in the process of writing a grant that would be with the Spring Hill Resource Center that has a new name that's very long, the Joyce Cusack Center. Was there for the ribbon cutting. That was a beautiful ceremony, too. Thank you.
They did a really good job. And we talked about having a youth summer program and I'm glad we were able to make that a much broader opportunity for the community. So again, just to see the creativity and the unique ways that you've decided, a thought out of the box to get some of these things done and bring new resources to the community really matters. So I'm happy to make that motion to approve a budget.
Second?
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by, what's it, you opposed? And I don't see any other questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cyrus Helga didn't have anything to say, did she? I just wanted to say her name.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you both. A few people in the room get the humor of, I'll never live it down.
Well, I told you earlier, sir, what the acronym for her other moniker is. So she is the greatest retention and expansion talent anywhere.
Did you have to practice that?
It's tough. It's a tongue twister, but we went through it a few times. So happy to present that to the council today, this morning.
And it's nice to have you here today for item six as well. Amended and restated agreement with Team Volusia EDC for Economic Development Activity Services with an expenditure of $250,000.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And let me introduce to you all. I have Chairman Jordan Gilotti. He's chairman of the board of Team Volusia. And I also have the CEO, Mr. Keith Norton. They're going to be presenting to you all of the different things that Team Volusia have done for us over the past year. And then we will also be seeking the approval of the upcoming budget for, as you stated, the economic development and activity services for Volusia County.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, council. Pleasure to be with you this morning. I'm Jordan Gilotti with NASCAR and have the pleasure of serving as Chair of Team Volusia Economic Development Corporation this year. Keith and I are appreciative of the opportunity to present this morning a brief update on Team Volusia's activities over the past year and all of the good work happening within the team. I'm sorry, thank you very much. So Team Volusia serves as the public-private partnership for economic development in Volusia County. The organization serves, represents over 80 private companies, seven colleges and universities, 14 municipalities, and Volusia County government, all with a shared interest in economic development within our community. Team Volusia, with assistance from its Investor Relations and Development Committee, has continued to grow the private sector investment in 2021 and is pleased to continue to add new private sector members who see value in Volusia County's economic development growth and prosperity. I, along with the following community service, I'm sorry, community members, serve as the 2021 Slate of Officers for Team Volusia, which includes our county manager, Phil Maroni as vice chair, Joyce Shanahan as secretary, John Ferguson as legal counsel, John Oliveri as treasurer, and our past chair, Dr. Duvan. Team Volusia has a strong and mighty staff. Many of you have worked with them. I have the pleasure of working in the same building as them and can personally attest to how busy they remain throughout the year. They work with companies of all shapes and sizes, both international and domestic, to showcase all of the opportunities here in Volusia County and help support job opportunities for our citizens. We're honored, we were honored to recently host Enterprise Florida's Board Meeting in our region this summer. Enterprise Florida, as you all may know, serves as the lead statewide organization dedicated to job creation and works with companies and site selectors to affect positive Florida location. This was the first time the Enterprise Florida Board Meeting comprised of statewide business leaders and Florida legislative representatives has selected our area to host one of their board meetings. It was truly a collaborative effort within the community to secure this meeting here in our area. Back in October 2015, the Volusia County Council, CEO Business Alliance, and Team Volusia all submitted letters to the governor requesting a meeting to be brought here to the area and it finally happened this year. The meeting was a success and increased the perception of Volusia County as a premier business destination. With that, I'll turn it over to Keith to share a little bit more specifics about our metrics.
Thank you, Jordan. Good morning. Now I'd like to just address our metrics. You've had the opportunity to review our PowerPoint. But as we continue to navigate through these unusual times, our team has continuously been striving for excellence in the following areas. Outreach recruitment. Despite some of the outreach events being postponed because of the events of the last 16 months, our strategic business outreach schedule is picking up. As you remember, historically, we've had 25 to 30 outreach events per year and that is to recruit companies, to identify companies, build relationships, and also raise the visibility of Volusia County. Marketing, we are able to spend some time updating our materials and continue to increase the overall perception of Volusia County as a business destination. And then, of course, we continue with our community assistance. We work with our community partners to increase our competitiveness and most recently completed a private sector-funded study to examine just that. And then competitive intelligence. Through our toolkit, we are able to provide up-to-date data to both our partners and to our prospects. The next slide is our project pipeline. It's continued to grow and even since we submitted this report several days ago for today's county council meeting, we are preparing three press releases that will be coming out of stage four, the stage for negotiations, that will be announced shortly. I just want to applaud our hard-working team and our partners. When I first arrived in Volusia County in September 2012, there were three active projects in our pipeline. And now we have over 90. And as you know, you've heard me say before, economic development is a team sport. So we all work very, very closely together to make sure our pipeline is full. Next is year-to-date, 2021. As you know, we work with our executive committee on the metrics for our organization. So we're always watching metrics and we are a sales organization. So far this year, we have worked with the following companies on locations in Volusia County. Alcom, Solax, and Cookies are all on the west side of the county. And D&amp;G Pharmaceuticals are on the east side in Daytona Beach. These projects represent over 735 jobs with capital investment of $112 million and annual payroll, new-to-payroll for the county of $31.2 million. Over the past three years, we've seen tremendous momentum as a result of business recruitment. 2020, even though we've had this recent health-related situation, we were able to successfully assist these companies with a Volusia County location. Bahio in New Smyrna Beach, Factory Direct and the Greenery in Edgewater, SI Carding, the VA, and Printech in Daytona Beach. And then in 2019, we wanted to remind you of the announcements in 2019 because they're part of our metrics. When the 1.4 million square foot Amazon fulfillment center landed in Volusia County and it was announced the day after Christmas in 2019, it was a great Christmas present for us and a holiday present. The three-year metrics, including 2019, 2021, year-to-date, of all these projects is nearly $500 million, representing almost 2,000 jobs, $390 million in capital investment, and an annual payroll of $78 million. So when we talk about the economic impact of these projects, we're referring to not only the direct jobs, but all the economic ripple effects these projects give our county. These impacts result in construction jobs for build-to-suit projects, small businesses providing services and products to these employers and other employers, and much, much more. Just a capsule of our investment update. We continue to be strong in private sector investment. We remain steady in our public support. And we appreciate all the public sector investment does, which covers our salaries and rent, while the private sector makes up the difference for all other aspects of the organization. Private funds and public funds are kept separate in separate financial institutions. Now I'll go through a myriad of activities and initiatives that the private sector, through their generous support, pays for. Our outreach activities, of course, various industry events, which allows us to meet and pitch to a variety of different businesses and consultants. Our technology toolkit, as I mentioned earlier, we also have a host of technology tools that assist us with doing our day-to-day operations. We also provide data from these services to our community partners upon request. And many of you may have viewed our new renewed website that is more user-friendly and visually appearing. Marketing update. We have focused on marketing. Our partnerships continue to increase the business brand awareness of Volusia County. That's our purpose, to market Volusia County for business. And many of you may have seen this or will receive. This is a supplement from Florida Trend. Thank you. Team Volusia sponsored this and spearheaded this endeavor. It's a great capsule of what we're all about. The last one was done three years ago. A lot has happened in the last three years, so we were pleased to spearhead this endeavor again. Social media continues to be an important part of our communication toolkit. And then, of course, some of you have seen livability. For the second year in a row, we've partnered with Livability Magazine, a national entity, on a talent attraction piece for the companies in our community and those we recruit to recruit staff. The magazine highlights the advantages to living in Volusia County and even the Volusia County Human Resources Team uses this to persuade positive talent acquisitions. And then on the international front, continuing in marketing, we work in partnership with Enterprise Florida to enhance the business brand for Florida and Volusia County. The magazine is seen on an international scale and targets business leaders in all sectors across the globe. These images represent some of the advertising articles over the past two years. We're also excited to be partnering again this year for even more content on Volusia County. And then the strategy of success. This year, we wrapped up our three-year strategic plan, the Strategy for Success. Many of you were involved in that. We are pleased that we have finalized all the action steps. In this slide are many of the reports identified and recommended by the strategy that were implemented and created. And we were able to assist in making Volusia County more competitive. The reports were all supported by private sector investment in Team Volusia and we are proud to say that as a result of investments made by Duke Energy and others, one of these reports served as a catalyst for the location of the Amazon fulfillment center in Deltona. Much of the information presented has assisted the staff and board with enhancing the overall competitiveness of our community and we look forward to working on a new strategic plan for our organization going forward. I might add, the recently completed Vision First Advisor Strategic Assessment of Volusia County involved input from over 60 community leaders from various partners and businesses. Their primary recommendation was to hold a retreat with our economic development partners, which we are in the process of planning and scheduling. And that is a direct result of the community input from our business leaders. Now, the 2020 investor survey results were spearheaded by our Investor Relations Committee and the leadership of our investor and small business owner, Shalish Patel. We surveyed all of our membership in 2021 and these are just some of the testimonials we received from our members. And Jordan?
Thanks, Keith. I think we'll be very happy to answer any questions or comments from the council and would appreciate the consideration of approval of the Cooperative Agreement with Team Volusia Economic Development Corporation for Economic Development Activity Services.
Before we open it up for questions and comments, is there a motion to, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler? I have a question. You'll like it because it's not really hard. But Carissa, I'm wondering if you, do you have the package here for this item? Can you bring up the resolution? Can you bring up the resolution on file number 9193? Do you have that back there? I'd like us to look at the purpose, and then I want to make a point about it and give the community some encouragement of what's happening. If you can find it, it's under Purpose, it's number 1. B. Okay. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this. This purpose will show that there's a lot of different moving parts, and there could be redundancy, there could be overlap that's harmful, and that's why it's absolutely required that this be a team effort. And this morning, on the way down here, our Assistant County Manager Suzanne led a brilliant discussion on being a team, because it's not always easy with all the different players. We're dealing with different cities and the county, the economic development staff, the airport, and Team Volusia, and then you have other people that are, you know, CEO of Business Alliance that wants to be involved. So let me just read real quick, if you'd bear with me. Number...letter B, "Services provided by the Team Volusia Economic Development shall not substitute but supplement the economic development strategic plan of Volusia County and shall be designed to complement the ongoing activities of the VCED, the municipalities within the county, Career Source, Flagler Volusia, the Volusia County School Board, the Chambers of Commerce, and other existing..." And there's a lot going on there. I think we're...I think we're reining in and making progress of how it works best. I think Team Volusia should be the designated representative to bring new companies in so that it's not confusing. But once you identify and bring people, we have to work together, and I'm not saying you are, I'm just trying to make a point, with the economic development, with Cyrus, with Helga. Because this is the answer to the affordable housing problem. This is the answer to our kids who want to stay here and be able to afford to stay here. We have to present a...I'm taking a long time with this because it's really important to me. It's one of the things I've enjoyed the most since before I got here and now that I'm here. We don't agree on every single thing, but I bet we agree on about ninety-nine percent of it, and the things that we don't agree on, you listen to. We can have frank discussions, and I think we're making progress. What Helga's doing with the incubator and helping to craft entrepreneurs that are very creative, that don't know anything about business, is really important. I just...I want to encourage what you just said, to have another team meeting with all the different players, because we are making progress. But we could destroy it if you bring people here, and we have to go to the cities where they might want to go, we have to come to the county, there's so many other things involved. We have to know where the lines are. And for me, it's part of the One-Stop Resource Center that Helga and Cyrus and I have spoken about, so that we continue making incredible progress. So I'm going to vote for it. I'm happy to see where we're going, and I just want to encourage you. I know sometimes it's frustrating. You've got to deal with new people that get elected, and you've got to deal with this whole community, and it's a team sport, and I think you're doing it well. I look forward to continuing to work for you. So with that, is there a...there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, all in favor to approve the $250,000 budget. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings us to item seven. This is a quasi-judicial hearing relating to land use matters. If there has been any ex parte communications, that would be the proper time to disclose the sum and substance of these conversations with the vested counsel. Being none on this particular item, proposed abandonment of a portion of the plat...of re-subdivision of Waterway Park.
Good morning. Tad Caysbeer, county engineer. This is a request from the petitioner to vacate a fifteen-foot-wide drainage easement that was placed as a part of the replat of the Waterway Park back in 1958. The home that is shown on the aerial there and bifurcated by the said drainage easement was actually constructed in 1958, and so is obviously in conflict with said drainage easement. The county has no issues, has no current use for the drainage easement, and point of fact, in several other locations in this subdivision have already vacated certain drainage easements. We coordinated with the city, because Godfrey Road is their city, is their road, and they have no use for the drainage easement either. Staff recommends approval of the vacation.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Robbins. Any discussion? There appear no discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. That brings us to item eight, another quasi-judicial hearing. This is a public hearing, and so we'll call on the public in a moment. Same thing with any disclosure of ex parte by any member of the council? I think none. I have not talked to the...since the last meeting, to the people involved, I have discussed this with voters in the public, provided the county attorney and clerk with written ex parte communications sent, so that it's part of the record. And just for the record, my decision and my vote will be made on the evidence presented today and how that squares up with the county charter, with the overlay, and with the surrounding area, and how it fits into there. So with that said, Clay, would you like to begin?
Thank you. Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management, with me is Susan Jackson, Planning Manager. Today, we are bringing back to you the item that was continued from the September 7th meeting pertaining to the rezoning of 123 acres within our 323-acre Sun Rail Transit-Oriented Design Activity Center. This was a specific area called out in 2013 by the county council as part of the efforts to spearhead the use of commuter rail in Volusia County. We had made a commitment to the other counties involved, and we're going forward with the development of Sun Rail stations in DeBury and Deland. This station was utilizing an existing Antrak station. It's there, it's the historic Antrak station for the city of Deland. The comp plan itself put in place a series of goals, objectives, and policies that talked about what was envisioned for this area. In other words, we have this transit facility, a commuter rail coming. What do we need to do as far as complementary land uses to ensure that we are being consistent with our goals, with trying to broaden our options for transportation? As such, we looked at what was done as part of the research for the DeBury Transit-Oriented Development. That identified that a need for a mixture of residential of various types, single-family, multifamily, as well as commercial and office uses in close proximity, such that walking and biking were viable options for those residents to the rail station. We put in place that there was an option. The option was to follow these more intensive development standards and go through what the applicant is going through here, or develop under the current zoning that was in place, as well as the land use that was in place. So there is, on the west side, approximately forty acres of land that has industrial use. Excuse me, it's almost fifty acres. It's got industrial use that could be developed today under the I-1 zoning. There's also urban low-intensity land use around, which could allow upwards of four units per acre. On the eastern side, they do have currently A-3 zoning, which would allow for residential development. Under the TOD standards, we have minimum densities that are required, as well as maximum densities that cannot be exceeded. So what you're seeing is that when staff gets an application or someone is looking to develop, we already have a set of parameters that we have to apply to their application. So if someone wanted to come in and do lower density that did not meet the minimum density requirements, we would have to say that that's not acceptable and not consistent with the comprehensive plan. If they tried to exceed those densities, similar type of answers are provided by staff. So when this particular application came through, we looked at what was being done with 123 acres. It's an integration of open space, it's an integration of multifamily, townhome, single-family, and commercial. So it met all of the various criteria within the TOD requirements. It has to go through the PUD process in order to implement that. That ensures that we have guidance in regards to other development standards, so that that way, we have basically a specific zoning for this area. Staff reviewed it and determined that it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan and the general goals, objectives, and policies, not only of the future land use, but all the other elements within the comprehensive plan. So in front of you, this is from your agenda packet. This shows the concept plan that is associated with this. You can see on the east side that on State Route 44, we have commercial out parcels, then we have single-family residential, and then we have a large open area with a stormwater pond. Then, as you get on Grand Avenue, this is where they are going to be developing a boulevard approach. This will be a hundred-foot right-of-way with a meeting in the middle, on-street parking, sidewalks, and multi-use trails, as well as integration of basically building-forward design for residential and non-residential uses. This is consistent with the policies of trying to set up a pedestrian-oriented road network. Also included in this would be townhomes, multifamilies, and then as you move towards the west, you again see the townhome type of development, and then a considerable amount of open space on the west side of an existing industrial development, as well as stormwater. At the last meeting, there were some serious concerns that were brought forward, specifically the owner of that property, as you can see there, that has zoning I-1C. Mr. Bart Phillips came in and indicated that he was concerned. He has an existing metal recycling facility, and he is afraid that the noise that would be generated would be creating a nuisance, and that he would receive a series of code-enforcement issues from those potential residential units that are going to be developed within that area. Also, there was concern in regards to how that would be noticed to the property owners moving into this area. So what we've received notice, and the applicant will confirm, is that they met with Mr. Phillips to review his concerns. There was an email sent forward by Mr. Phillips that indicated he was accepting of the development with the stipulations that were identified. There is an existing wall along a portion of that property line that's shared between this project and Mr. Phillips' property. The applicant is agreeing to extend that wall along the length of their property where they have a shared property line. The applicant is willing to include a hundred-foot vegetated buffer from that property line to the closest residential development. In addition, anyone who is purchasing property within 500 feet of the shared property line will be made to go through basically a notification at time of purchase to make sure that they understand that they are building within close proximity of an existing industrial operation. So we believe that that addressed a majority of the concerns that were identified. We did receive a follow-up email from a Catherine Matthews, who is a resident of the area, who expressed concerns with the traffic that may be generated from this project. And she identified four specific things that she wanted corrected. Everything from changing speed limits, to restricting truck traffic, to looking at signalization, or also installation of traffic signs. That came in on the 17th. John Chaney responded yesterday and indicated that some of these ideas were very good and that they would try and further up because they do require study. For example, changing the speed limit, we cannot just go and change it from 30 to 25. It has to be studied, and there are specific criteria that are established to in order for us to modify the speed limit. We also had previously studied the need for stop signs or any other types of traffic control in the area. They were not needed at that time, but we will continue to monitor this throughout the process. So what you see before you is a proposed development. It consists of 55,650 square feet of non-residential commercial primarily located along the frontage of State Route 44. Development there will have to comply with not only our corridor standards, but the city of Deland's corridor standards. We made a point of coordinating with them because they are the water and sewer providers for this project, and they have identified that they do have currently capacity at their plants, and it will be the responsibility of the developer to making sure that the connections to the existing system meets their criteria and is on the applicant's expense. The corridor standards identify signage and architectural standards that are applicable to non-residential buildings. Internally, as you can see, there's going to be primarily residential. That's consisting of 114 single-family, 210 townhomes, 324 apartments. What we see is that there's a variety of phasing. This is important because we want to make sure that any kind of county-impacted improvements are conducted immediately as part of Phase One. The main thing there is that we don't want to put off what are vital improvements for the overall benefits of the public, and also we want to make sure that this project is starting off on the right foot. So therefore, what we have is the reconstruction of Grand Avenue, as well as the installation of the River to Sea multi-use trail as part of this first phase. So when they come in, they will be doing the improvements to Grand, they will be installing their portion of the multi-use trail. We did add some things after PLDRC that were identified at last meeting. We've also updated the development in order to be consistent with the items I identified at the beginning of my presentation. So that concludes what your staff has to say. The applicant is here, will be available for any questions that y'all may have.
Why don't we do this, Clay? You'll have some questions, but there are members of the public. Why don't we listen to the public? Mr. Phillips is here, that will be interesting. And then Mr. Woods, I'll call on you last because you were the last received. I think that would be appropriate after you listen to the public.
Love to get rid of this mask. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to first say thank you for concerning my business and allowing me to serve the public for many years to come and serving the county. I have talked to Rick about his development. It's not perfect for me because I would love to have industrial built all around me, but it is a good compromise to have that type of buffer, and we'll have to live with it. So all I'm here to say is I want to say thank you to you, so I don't have housing about five feet away from my property. Exaggerating, but close enough when you're dealing with metal. Thank you. Any questions or anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Vicki Bradford?
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning, Councilman. My name is Vicki Bradford-Chatham. I was born and raised in Deland, Florida, and my family was, and my children are, with their grandchildren. We take pride in our community. We are Deland proud. We love our community. We've seen it grow throughout the years, and we want to keep it the way it was meant to be. I understand it's about the bottom line. I understand it's about dollars for our county. And yes, we have to make funds. However, this development is not that. If we're so worried about the green effect and our land, then this is a serious judgment on every one of you that are voted by we, the people, are going to make a very bad mistake. They are going to decrease the green areas. I live on Hazen Road, which was rural, and now it's not. I can't even get to my home anymore because of the traffic. I cannot come out Hazen Road to New York and go eastbound, because I will get in a wreck. The traffic is backed up from fifteen A past Woodward at times, and even to Sheridan, which is a little east. This is a disaster waiting to happen. I'm very familiar with the FDO-T projects. My husband works for a very big company in the state of Florida, and he works with billion-dollar projects every day with FDOT and developments. We are putting the cart in front of the horse. We cannot plan a subdivision of this magnitude. It's zoned right now for seventy-four homes, and you're looking at over six hundred. You need to fix the infrastructure first. You can't build developments and then go, "Oh, let's worry about the streets." It's wrong. You don't do that. Big companies in Florida don't do that, like Duke Energy, they don't. You have to address the infrastructure. Schools. Citrus Grove, which I live by, packed. I can't even get to my house between one-thirty and three-thirty in the afternoon, going to my own home. Where are the kids going to go? Are they planning a school? Because the school needs to be out there. The traffic is horrendous. Something has to be done. New York will have to be four-lane. We are dislocating many of animals. I know some of you might not be green, and I'm not over the top, I'm in the middle. That's a lot of land, that's a lot of animals that are going to go. We need to relook at this. They can make money putting less stuff up there. They can make money putting less structures there. I'm opposed, most of my friends on Hazen Road are opposed. This is going to be a nightmare for Deland. Do we want the west to look like the east? And you know what I'm referring to. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for coming. Michael Woods.
Good morning, everybody. For the record, Michael Woods of the law firm Cobb Cole, 231 North Woodland Boulevard. Here today on behalf of the applicant, and Rick Wolfheart is here as well. I'm going to speak very briefly, and then Rick can kind of supplement the information. But I want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with us again. Obviously, we were here two weeks ago, and you sent us off, I think, generally happy with the concept that was proposed, but we had to go iron out a few details with Bart, and we've done that. But in the interim, I also, and I'll let, I'll let Rick explain a little bit in greater detail what that's going to look like. But I do want to kind of touch upon the point that has come up, both in that presentation and during our presentation at the first hearing, we kind of jumped right into what is being proposed, what is coming. We didn't, my bad, I didn't really kind of lay the predicate for what's there right now and how we got there. And I think that causes some concern, and I want to kind of be able to address that, both on the nature of the property right now, with Volusia Land and Timbers property and the pines, and then just touching back on that 2013 TOD very briefly. First and foremost, there are a number of trees that are out there, and the project is proposed. You know, Rick's presentation will go through it, you've seen it before, has a great deal of open physical space. He emphasized the underbrushing and the utilization of the land, and the preservation of the large trees and green space and open area. But the property as it currently is out there is a, a large portion is planted pines that was designed and made for the commercial timbering. And under your regulations, you know, you can go out there today and cut those trees down for ag purposes, and it's exempt from the tree preservation requirements. Now, had they done that three years ago, because there's a three-year look back, I'm sure you're all familiar with that, those trees come down, there's no obligation for replanting or anything like that. I don't want to emphasize and say that that was the full purpose of what's there, but that's what can be there. We don't have to deal with that consequence, because we do have a mitigation plan, we do have a conservation plan, we do have a plan to activate and utilize that. But, but those trees that are out there aren't original old-growth forests, and they weren't planted with the intention of staying there forever. So I think that's in part to alleviate some of the concerns about now the development coming forward. The other element to kind of address is the nature of this transition. You know, why do we have this interim status since 2013 to now that kind of kept the industrial in place, that kept the ag in place? Particularly when you look back at the documentation at the time, and the encouragement and the comments, because again, this was a regionally planned commuter rail. DEO, predecessor for DCA, or successor, FDOT, were adamant about trying to get rid of those classifications even in the interim. They didn't want to see a continued growth of industrial out by this rail station. You know, prior to Sun Rail coming aboard, and I know there's always some mixed feelings about the nature of Sun Rail and how it's come to be and its status, but we were out in the railroad tracks, that's where you put your industrial, that's where the circus headquarters were, right? But then we made a determination that the Sun Rail Station to Deland is coming out there. And what you want for people coming to visit our area and coming off that train is not necessarily an expansion of the industrial property. Now, at the time in 2013, there was some question about, we were still dealing with Phase Two North and Phase Two South and that. We all kind of remember some of those discussions. So we didn't want to, there was a concern to not obligate that development if something could fall through with Sun Rail, to leave the current property owners, like even Bart, with entitlements for a higher use if Sun Rail didn't come. But Sun Rail is coming here now, and so the idea was for this to then spring forward. So the idea that this has not been kind of planned for, or for development, this has been on the books for a number of years, and it's just now finally coming forward to fruition. And I think, you know, again, going back to the intensity of development, I think we hit it on the first presentation, but the sheer amount of the industrial property that could be developed by right today, under the existing zoning, would be a fairly, fairly large, fairly intense industrial use. Obviously, that's not where we're going, but to the extent that there is the option to keep the area pristine and pure as it currently is, I think that's probably unlikely. So with that, that was just to kind of lay down how we got there, if you have any questions on that, but otherwise, I think Rick has a brief presentation to just kind of fill you in on his conversations with Bart.
Rick, before you start, was there any more public comment? Okay, then I'm going to, I'm going to close the, the public comment part. You were both be able to, to speak as we're, as we continue here, so don't misunderstand that, but I do need to close the, the public hearing. Continue. Thank you.
Good. Still, good morning. For the record, my name is Rick Wolfheart. I live at sixteen forty-two Bridgewater Drive down at Lake Mary. I'm the developer, the engineer for the property. First of all, before I start, I want to thank Bart. Not only did we meet, he gave me a tour of his facility, and I get, really got a better handle, and we're going to continue trying to work together on things to make it better for both of us. But he was very gracious, gave me a good bit of his time, and I think the results were an agreement that I think is, will be good for, for both, both parties. The, and I'll see if I can hit this thing right. Okay. So again, I think we all know the location out on State Road 44. This is just to show where we have the, the actual TOD overlay, and there's two parts of it. There's a core portion and a transitional portion. Key issue there is the minimum and maximum densities. There are fifty percent of the site, in fact, probably close to sixty percent of the site is planted pine trees. As Michael mentioned, you know, these are relatively new growth. There are no historical trees. We've done a tree survey, and there's nothing historical out there at all, and there's very, very few specimen trees. There are a few, and I have to say, unfortunately, many of the specimen trees, under a dozen, are in ill health. There are not, there are no live oaks, these are primarily water oaks and other type of oak trees, but they're not doing all that well. Based on the 2020 study that we did, there are no endangered species in the area. In fact, surprisingly, there are no gopher tortoises, which I really expected to find. Now, with gopher tortoises, when we start construction, if you are so gracious to grant us approval, we will do that survey again. They do come and they do go, but as of the study, there were none. There are wetlands on the property, you can see them on the far left side, however, these are in areas that we will not impact, so there are no wetland impacts on this property whatsoever. The, this gives you a fairly good idea blown up of what we've agreed to with Bart. You can see his operation, the existing ten-foot concrete wall, the hundred-foot buffer, and then the dash blue line is the five-hundred-foot line that anyone living within that area will be notified as they buy, as they rent, and in the, in the homeowner's documents. The one area that we've been trying to work with is on the trail and on the interconnectivity. As I mentioned last time, the Pelham Park project is now under construction as far as housing. We should see housing going up there shortly. There is a small gap between the track on Old New York and Euclid. We are going to work endeavor to get that sidewalk completed, so that the Pelham Park project and other projects to the east will have connection to the trail. The trail will run from the roundabout southerly on the western side of the Grand Avenue. And working with city or county staff, we agreed that the best way would be then to go down Euclid to what is called Broadway, and then Broadway to the train station. So our intention is to work to get that connection made prior to the train coming. We think that's a benefit to this project, and we'll do everything we can. We are fully obligated to give up all the right-of-way and to, and to develop and build the trail next to our property. So any place that exists, that will be done at no expense to the government. This is just a view, and talking about the, meeting our open space requirements. As you can see, and we colored this up a little bit better, I think last time, I used purples and lavenders, and it really didn't show the intent. This, I think, shows it much better. And as you can see, all the green puffy areas, those are areas that we are going to develop by just strictly either leaving them completely alone, or, in some cases, like between the apartments and the towns, we're going to do the, cut the understory material, and we're going to remove small trees, so it becomes more of a park. Now, then you start seeing exactly how and the way we're going to be trying to connect everything, and you start to see that the entire community is interconnected. The Grand Avenue, this is, again, you see the purple, those are sidewalks that go out through the community. As you see, we are preparing to build that sidewalk over to the east side and to eventually connect. And you can see the green line, which is the twelve-foot bike path, the multi-use path, that will be built again by us. Plus also, we are building one specific parking lot for a trailhead, and that is right there on the north end, next to the, the pool area by the apartments. And we also are building the parallel parking. Well, the parallel parking isn't public right-of-way. While we'd like to see our residents having the ability of using it, we realize it's public, and if anybody who wants to park there, it's not going to be restricted. I believe that, you know, Clay went through the one hundred and fourteen units, how we're building, and this just gives you an idea of how this mixed use all fits together. The core densities, as you can see, are a little higher than the transitional densities. What we can say very comfortably is, we are at the bottom level of the minimums. We're not, we're one hundred and sixty percent of the minimum, which is like thirty-three percent of the maximum. So we're developing this under the criteria established by the comp plan as minimum densities. When you start looking, we also are not just going out there and leaving trees, we are committed to build gazebos, pavilions, picnic tables, bench seating, and all these walkways are going to interconnect, so people will be able to not only walk to the train station, but to walk throughout the whole community and walk up to the commercial area, which we think is very important. This, as picture, I just took this last Saturday. This is Pelham Park, and I've been mentioning that in many of the areas, in about eighteen percent of the property. We're not cutting trees down. We're leaving the trees, but what we are doing is undercutting the understory, the low growth, and removing the smaller trees. I don't know, I was sort of proud when we, when we finished Pelham Park, and this is right by, by the playground area. And this is what we think a lot of our site's going to be looking like. So it's not just a preserve area, but in the area between the apartments and the townhouses, and around the townhouses, and around the single-family, this is what the residents will see in the future. So it's a very, very walkable, very playable area, and we've tied this into our recreational parsons, so we think that this, this will create a very nice setting for the residents, not only of this property, because it's, it could be used by other members of the public here in Volusia County. Again, showing you the location of the commercial, we've located where we think it's a park for.
One second.
Yes.
The picture that you just showed us, that's on Old New York?
This is south of Euclid, east of Ridgewood.
Okay. And then, and then the picture that you just went to, where would this similar kind of areas be on this, on this green fluffy stuff, as you called it?
Okay.
Good description.
Well, it's, it's all of this area here, all of this area, all of this area, all of this area over here, all that. Now, there are thirty-to-fifty-foot buffers along, all along the property line. Those are preserves. We will not, cannot, do not touch those areas. But those are, those are strips that go in there, that's the requirement under the code, and we're providing that. But all the areas you see here going around, this, this is dry retention area, so this area.
I can't see your pointer.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I apologize.
No, that's.
Doesn't look like it's going to do that.
That's probably won't work.
Okay.
So just left, right.
And we'll find out the one I can see, I apologize.
That's right.
The area between the apartments and the townhomes, that will be the little puffy areas. Those are going to be like you saw in the previous picture here. That's what that should look like. The area that is between the railroad tracks and the townhomes on the east, except for the dry retention, those will be looking like that. The area that's down between the townhouses on the southwest corner will look like that. So really, everything you see that has that little puffy look is either going to be preserved where no one can touch it, or it's going to be like you see it, usable by all the residents. So most of the areas that are, that are readily assessable by the residents, except for the buffers and the area to the west of Bart's property, will be like you saw in the picture.
And, and that's existing?
Well, those are existing trees. All we're doing is going in there and removing the understory and any trees that are under six inches, and leaving anything from six inches and greater, which is what we did in that picture. That picture is exactly the results of what we plan to do there. And if you go, I would ask you all to go over, I mean, we're sort of, I'm proud of it. The playground is there, you know, we, we are just now starting to build houses, and I could tell you, most nights I go there, there's already a couple, three kids out there playing on the playground, and it's going to be a nice area, I think, for not only residents, but for others, and we hope to create that same type of atmosphere here.
But it's, it's already been said that those trees are not healthy, so you must be going through and.
What I said were, the specimen trees that were out there are not in the best of shape. There are planted pines, they're going to be fine. I mean, they're going to be leaving there for the next fifty years. There are a lot of other smaller trees, but they're not specimen trees. Again, going back to the fact that most of this stuff was planted in the last twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, they're just not big. So we're, we're, so we're talking about smaller trees that are six to eighteen inches, there's quite a few of those. The, the larger ones, though, you know, I'm not saying they're going to be, need to be taken down, but at the same time being, they're, they're very, they're, they're not the healthiest, and they're not live oaks, they're primarily secondary oaks. But, no, I feel very comfortable that the, the look that we're trying to achieve, we, I think the health of the forest is reasonable. I think what Michael was pointing out is, a lot of it is planted pine that could be cut down. We're not planning to cut them down. Under our development program, fifteen percent of the site is being left as preserved, not touched at all. Twenty percent will be mandate, or be managed like I just showed you in the other picture, that's thirty-five percent of the site. The other, there's another fifteen to twenty percent, up to about forty-eight percent, where we have our dry retention ponds, because this is all, there are no lakes out here. All those will be left green, but we do have to remove the trees to dig them out, to get the fill, to fill the site, and to provide retention. But they are not going to be developed, they're going to be, they'll be green when we're done, like any other dry retention pond. They're going to be, they'll be green when we're done, like any other dry retention pond.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, are you working with the county forester to determine which trees are healthy enough to leave?
We will be. We work with Keith and, you know, very closely on the other project. We've already done our tree survey. And as part of what we're doing is we have tree removal permit where we provide all that data and then we will walk. What we've done before, and we walk him, we walk the site with him, with Keith and his staff, and we go through all that. And then we apply for our tree removal permit where we need to. And as you all are aware of, it's a very comprehensive ordinance that, you know, initially when I looked at it as a developer, I sort of rolled my eyes saying, wow. I will tell you the results, looking at Pelham Park and looking at what I think is going to be a very nice project, is, you know, you're clustering your developments. It does raise the density up, but I think it's the right way to do things. And the end result is if you look at the Pelham Park and you look at this project here, you end up with 40, 50% of your sites being left in some form of green, 35 of it being left as trees. And I think that, I think, is a, you know, a very, very well-spoken thing here in Volusia County. And now that we're involved in it and looking at it, I'm very proud of the way it's coming out and I think it's going to create a great living environment. Okay. So then, as we go further on, you know, going back to trips, and this is, I'll do this very briefly. The industrial use has a possibility of 815 trips, PM trips. Our project is now at 402. So we've actually, from what it could be built as industrial to where we are, really only developing about half of the allowable trips under the current zoning. And this was from a memo that we did get from the county of reviewing our traffic study. There, I wanted to show you, these are our front-loaded towns. These are actually pictures of a project that has been built. It's just being finished, so the landscaping is very, very young. But if you look at the rendering that we initially provided you, my intention was not to try to say, look at the building, look at this. I was trying to show how the parking works with the 12-foot trail, which works with the sidewalk, which works with the building. So I went ahead and had our guys go back in. And staff has been very hard on us in some ways. The requirements along the street, you know, the number of trees are 35%, 40% more than normally might be required. We upgraded from a two-and-a-half or one-and-a-half inches caliber to a three-inch caliber tree. So the staff has said, look, we want this to be something special. We want to go ahead and make sure that, you know, we're just not planting out the little two-inch twigs that, you know, 10 years from now might look okay. So we're going to have to spend extra money, put a bigger tree in, put them closer together. What's not on that picture, and I apologize, is in addition to the shade trees, and those are our live oaks that I'd like to use, but in addition to those, we also have an additional grouping of ornamental trees that we are responsible for. So in between some of those trees, crape myrtles and all the rest, will end up being put in. And that's in the zoning code or the zoning development or agreement. So we're aware of that. The landscaping next to the building, I think we need to be 24 inches. They're not quite that in this picture. So again, they upgraded what we have to plant and the centers we have to plant them on. We're all in favor of that. We want this to open up. One of the things that you see here on, this is the west, looking at the west side of the building, you'll see there's a wrought iron fence there. That was something we had been talking about. We've added that and I believe that's in the, that's in there now. So we want to make sure that, you know, as you walk down, there's a sidewalk on the building side and then there's a walkway. So if you're living there, you can go out to the trail, but you also have your own walkway. And there is going to be a rail there saying, okay, private, public. So we have sort of done that. And I know, I think it's come out well. I think it's going to be a nice addition. Now, the areas that are not, are not next to the townhomes. We have 30-foot, 25- and 30-foot buffers. And we're going to try to save those trees. So as you're coming in off the roundabout, north of the townhome area, we do have strips in there. So, and we're, and we have been able to. If you go out again, I hate to keep pointing Pelham Park, but it is a good example. We were able to save most of those trees that are in these strips. I was a little concerned when you get down to 25, 30 feet and you start leaving strips of trees, but it's worked well and we foresee that that'll be the same here. The other thing about the project is it does generate $130 million in FALORM tax base, which we think is important to point out. This county, at the time of build-out, just the county portion of the FALORM tax is over a million and a half dollars. So it does go, come a long way. I mean, we feel that development should be paying their fair share and we believe that, given your current zoning or your current ordinance, as we will. When you start comparing impact fees, you know, you have 3.2, almost $3.2 million in road impact fees. That is, you know, that's what the ordinance calls for. So during the course of development, building these buildings, the county is going to get money. Hopefully, they'll spend most of it on our side of the county to improve the roads, because we want to see it improved. But it's not a free ride for anybody. We are going to be paying that amount, for a total of 6.6 million, when you add in the school fees and all the rest. As far as concurrency, we went through the concurrency issue reviewing with the city on utilities. We went through with the school board. We went through the roads. And, you know, I think we've tried to look at all the aspects of the levels of service established by the county and we have met them. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Can you back up two slides?
Sure.
I was going to stop you, but you were on a roll. One more.
One more, okay.
Why didn't you give that picture to the news journal?
The picture you saw was from about three, two months ago, two or three months ago. And it was for a very specific presentation we were going to do to talk about the relationship of the road. I met with the county staff and since then, we've actually done two things. Initially, we were going to, all we were going to do is widen the road out, leave it two lanes, no median. And during all that period of time, we changed it. So I apologize, but this, it was an old photo, but this is, I think, very much more representative. What we also did is I went back and got actual pictures of the units that we're planning for so you could get a better feel on them. Those buildings weren't even around when we first did that perspective. So it was a timing issue. I apologize that the other one didn't show up, because I think this is a much nicer, more pleasant view of what the road will look like. We think Grand Avenue, we're going to hopefully turn the name to be appropriately named. It's going to be a Grand Avenue here for Volusia County.
You don't have to apologize, but it would have served you better had you had you had this picture.
Yes, sir, and I realize that.
I know when I saw the picture, I was stunned, because I listened to the presentation two weeks ago and you probably remember me saying, we're really close here. This, we're going to have this multimodal developments around the train station. And in fact, we need to have it in order to make Sun Rail pay off. You're getting the first crack at it and you have to set a standard. Because if we get, if this council gets it wrong and you come in and do something halfway or just for, with an eye towards profit and not towards the beauty of the area, then it's going to be on all of us that we have destroyed one of the most beautiful streets in West Volusia, Grand Avenue. This side, you are right. I've spent some time out there. This is planted pine. And it could be, it could be all cut down. It could be all industrial. It's going to be this kind of a development. And I, it just needs to be, again, you have to set the standard for what's coming afterwards so that we don't destroy this area. I don't want to look like somebody said, you know, East Volusia. There's beautiful parts of East Volusia. I think our whole county's pretty. But I don't want it to look like other counties that are all concrete. This picture gets us closer to that. And I understand, I have a landscape business. I understand that you don't plant a tree and it's 40-foot with a 40-foot spread, you know, in a year. But it's pretty quick. I remember the time when we planted all these little oaks on woodland that Skinner's planted. And I thought, wow, that's going to take forever. Well, forever's here. It's a beautiful canopy over the road and it didn't take that long. So I want to, you're going to have some questions. I want to ask the council. We've had, I've closed a public hearing. We've had two more people that came, it looks like they, I saw them walk in, they probably came from work that would like to speak. So I want to ask the council's preference. Would you allow these two people to speak? Everybody agrees. So we'll come back to you.
If we're here to answer any questions.
Lisa, I can't tell if it's a T, if it's Steckler or Sleckler.
It's...
There. Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you. This is 40-foot a rope. This is the size of the home sites that are proposing for the 114 single-family house. I'm sorry, this, my house is wider from front door to back door than 40-foot. So you are talking, I mean, this is 10-foot. This is another 10-foot. I mean, you're talking sites that are smaller than what houses that probably most of us live in. I'm not saying this area isn't going to be developed. We had this conversation after the meeting. I would prefer that it never did. I talked to a real estate agent, I'm in the mortgage business. I talked to a real estate agent from Flagler County this morning and they used to call this Deadland, because it was beautiful and empty and no one wanted to be here. That's why I moved here. I didn't move here to look like Kissimmee. I don't know, we lived in Kissimmee off of, my husband isn't here, I think it's Pointy Onna or wherever they put in the Sun Rail down there. It's disgusting. And I keep using that word. I read my transcripts. I watched myself on video. I have no other word that's appropriate for public speaking besides disgusting. You should drive down Pointy Onna. It used to be cattle fields. It used to be beautiful. They came in and they did this crap all over it. I understand it's going to develop, but you're talking a 900% increase. If you approve this PUD and change the zoning, you're talking about a 900% increase from 74 homes that it's currently zoned for to 648. It's actually 86.7%, but I'm rounding, 867%. So I'm rounding it. It's irresponsible. It's greed and I just don't want to see it happen. Change it. I get it. We talked, I don't want to see it developed at all. I love that it's dead. I love that it's quiet and it's peaceful. I get it. We're going to have to make it happen, but don't allow this to happen. Because yes, great, but you're still, if you want to make Grand Avenue grand again, as he keeps saying like a politician, go up Grand Avenue off of Glenwood to the right. Go towards, and we couldn't think of that, Woodrow, the nitro preserve that's up that way. Drive up that way. That's Grand Avenue. You see very few houses. You sure as heck don't see crap like this with the townhouses right up against the road. Leave some trees along Grand Avenue. You've already taken all the trees off of New York when you put the commercial space in. People keep talking about, like, I posted this online, about Winter Park and all this stuff. Downtown Deland, I'm sorry, is not a destination location like downtown Winter Park. You know, they have Williams Sonoma, they have PF Chang's, they have large retail places. No one's going to come from Orlando to go to Anna Bananas and Forte Bello. They're delicious. We love Anna Bananas. We go, but you're not going to get people coming from Orlando up here. The other thing about that is, is it's several miles away. The train station is, I mean, I don't want a PF Chang's or a Williams Sonoma in the commercial spaces here. No one's going to ride the Sun Rail up here. The dynamic has changed so much because of COVID that, you know, people don't use the Sun, won't be using the Sun Rail to go to downtown Orlando to eat or do anything like that or go to work, because now almost everybody works from home. I just think it's irresponsible to allow a 900% increase in what's approved now to do for this to happen. That's it.
Thank you. Julie Batchelder? Is it Batch or Butch?
Batchelder.
Batchelder. I had it right the first time.
Am I standing here? Is this where I stand? Okay. My name is Julie Batchelder. I moved to Volusia County in June of 2008. I love it here. I moved, we moved from Carson City, Nevada. I agree with 100% of what the lady before me, Lisa, said about the increase and everything. But one of the things that I want to point out is when we moved, I live at 720 Hazen Road, which is a little bit of ways from where this place is predicted to be built. But I go through the roundabout and we use 44 all the time. When we moved on that road, it was all woods all across the street from us. Dense, beautiful woods. I mean, we moved there specifically for being out in the country. There's like, I don't know, 15 homes on our road, I think. That was in June of '08 and February of '09. They mowed 20-some-odd acres of down from us and put Citrus Elementary School right directly across from our home. Now, we are faced with inundated with traffic, traffic, traffic on our road every morning and every afternoon. And we've had a terrible time this year because we've had to call the cops out because you can't even get in and out of your house. My point is, I don't think our school system is right now, for Citrus Elementary and Woodward, where this is predicted, one of those schools has got to take these children. And I know there's going to be kids in 640 homes. I just feel like our road structure and our school system is not up to speed to handle the kind of volume that he's wanting to put in. I agree with the lady before me, it's all about greed. And money talks and BS walks. And I'm sorry, but Deland is a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful city. We moved here because of Deland. My husband was transferred here and we could have lived in Melbourne. We chose Deland because we went through Hurricane Andrew in Miami and I said, I don't want to live in a place like that. We chose to live in Deland because it is a beautiful, quiet, wonderful city. And I don't want to see it destroyed. Thank you.
And lastly, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. I wasn't going to speak, but when he showed the pictures of the forest and then he said six caliber, anything six caliber, they're going to take out, anything smaller than that. So I'm wondering, percentage-wise, is that 80% or 90% of the trees going to be removed? Because six is like yay wide. And pines, they're like normal. They don't grow 80 and 40 and 50 feet wide, you know, like a oak tree. They're very narrow. So that worried me when he said, we're going to take out all the small trees. And to me, a four, five, and six-inch pine tree is a substantial tree. So that was my first issue. My second one is 40-foot wide, you know, when I grew up, we had a small house, a four-bedroom, one-bath house in Miami, and it was only on a third of an acre. And my relative said, why are you going into such a small house with such a small piece of property? And when they started building in Miami, they got smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. When you go to any city, the lots get smaller and smaller and the density gets higher and higher. And what you all apparently wanted years ago was this area to be exactly that, the smaller lots and the higher density. And this, to me, when you're looking at it, is not what should be there. There's too much greenery. There's too much openness. Because if you're in that area, you want density. You want like a thousand people getting on that train to supply the funds to keep it going. This is not going to supply enough people. So I understand the ladies are saying it's not a country living, but you didn't want a country living. You wanted density in this area. And I think you're doing a nice compromise. It is a beautiful, when you look at it, when you're looking at what could have been developed, I think it is a great compromise. I would like a little bit more density, but in the future, they might do that. A little bit higher buildings, something, you know, substantial. But I agree with the gentleman that he has worked very well with the outside landscaping. So I think you should approve it. Thank you.
God, you're giving me whiplash, John. I didn't know where you were going. Just a couple, a couple more questions. I noticed, I went back to the original overlay agreement in 2013 and it was approved five to two. There was two people that voted against it, Pat Northey and the current chairman, Jason Davis. I think they were right to vote against it. And the reason they voted against it is because there's, you said you look at it and your eyes, yes. But almost everything that it is offering that we would make, might think is a requirement says shall. And you know, in legal terms, shall doesn't mean should. So that was their point. It should have been changed to should. So I'm curious how many of the shals you made a should in this development? Did you take those shals and include them? I don't know if you, you had to, you had to look at the overlay, but how did it work? Is what I'm asking.
Well, and I know the overlay you were talking at and I had...
Well, and I, I know the overlay you were, you were talking at, and I, I actually probably should have called Pat Northey directly just to see on her thought process. I mean, I know at the time, Jason was no big fan of Sunrail in general. I, I read the shall and should language of, of Pat looking for more concrete nature of what was being proposed for there versus less. But I think what you have with your development agreement is incorporating the policies that are laid out in the comp plan to meet that, that it's, it's not discretionary there, right? Your comp plan has established those regulations. By using the PUD, you gotta comply with that, and that's what is being proposed. I don't think there's, I don't, the shall and the should, I think, came from whether you could stay with the old ag, with the, with the rural designation rather than if you're moving forward with the new. There, I didn't read there being a lot of flexibility with that. There is a pretty robust plan that a lot of people worked on for this, and that's what this project, this PUD was designed to incorporate with.
And I guess that's what I wanted to hear, because there, legally, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one on the council, but it looked to me that there would be a lot of wiggle room to not do what the obvious intent was. And I think that you have, have strived to do that. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get out of. I just, a few, a few more questions. Is Clay still in here? Clay, I have a procedural question for you. What we're being asked to approve today is simply the zoning change.
Yes, sir.
This is, they presented this as a conceptual plan. We're not approving the plan.
The plan provides a basis for approval. Yes, in other words, all subsequent applications for site plan subdivision shall be based on that plan and this agreement.
And so what, what is the next thing that will happen with the council? What will come back to us after this?
Uh, site plans are approved by the Development Review Committee, so that would not come back. But subdivision final plats would come back for approval.
And those will look like what's being presented today in this conceptual plan? Okay. Thank, thank you. I want to be clear on what we're, what we're approving and how far-reaching that is. The, uh, the overlay says that the goal is to provide an alternative to low-density suburban sprawl and automobile-dependent land use patterns through utilization of transit-oriented development design features. So, and, and I actually agree with that in this instance in, around Sunrail. It was interesting to hear John say it's not enough people. I think it's plenty. Uh, we've gone from seventy-four to six hundred and forty-eight residences, so a lot more people. I, I wanna, after I looked at the overlay, I went to the county charter. And the charter says, "In order to secure to the citizens of the county protection against unlawful taxes and improper use of public property or taxing power and abuse of the environment, the county shall have the duty to defend and enforce the following rights." And I'm not gonna read them all. One of the rights is minimum standards for environmental protection. "The council, after consideration of such advice and comment from a, a comp plan, comp plan board, may be submitted by the governing bodies of municipalities within the county shall establish minimal standard procedures, requirements, and regulations for the protection of the environment." Such minimum standards, procedures, requirements, and regulations may include, but shall, shall not be limited to tree protection, aquifer protection, stormwater management, and wastewater management, river and waterway protection, hazardous waste disposal, and wetlands protection. So, and then it goes on, but I think the intent is clear. This is our county charter. This is what we're all supposed to focus on doing for everything. So, and, and this is how my vote will come down on this project. I think it's the only way. So when I look at those things, with tree protection, I learned this morning something that I didn't learn last time, is that you, you are protecting some of the trees. We could have a discussion on pine trees. I, I won't do that today because they're already gonna be upset with me for taking so much time. But what I am concerned about is aquifer protection. Every one of these new homes is a new straw in the ground pulling out water from our aquifer. And you have a wetland there that you're not impacting, but it will be impacted because of the amount of impervious surface that's going around it. It'll affect it somewhere. My main concern, and here's the point I really want to hear from, from you on, is the stormwater management. You said, and I didn't hear you say this last time, that the potential water retention ponds will be dry. Is that what you said? You're not keeping, you're not making these a bunch of ponds and interconnected?
Simple answer is yes. Reason is the aquifer and the groundwater is very deep in this area. Uh, I think it's ten foot down. So all the stormwater we do collect will go into treatment and the dry retention and then percolate. It is what's considered a closed system. None of the water leaves the property. It all goes in. So to some degree, uh, we are recharging all of our water back into the dry retention, filtered in because of the depth of the water table, and then back into the aquifer.
And that is a better system?
Oh, I think it is. And keep in mind also, is all the utilities are through the city of Deland. Our water system being for, and, and all that is coming from the city. And so, and they have more than adequate capacity for both water and wastewater. So, so all that will be coming from them.
The reason that that's one of my main concerns is because I'm dealing now with, you know, as county chair, I'm all over the county, as Mr. Johnson is. And I'm getting calls from all over the county that, about flooding problems. And the flooding is not coming from the closed system, the system that you're talking about. It's coming from developments that have, for aesthetic purposes, for the purposes of irrigation, ponds that are kept full all the time, which creates a perched water table, which creates flooding down.
We, we don't even have that as an option, given the groundwater, and.
I'm trying to help you here.
Oh, and it's, I think we're looking good. In, in Pelham Park, same type of system. With all the heavy rains we had, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they're dry again. So they, they, this area is very good for development. Uh, you know, it was citrus many years ago. It drains well, and we're very comfortable with the, the on-site drainage.
And that's critically important, because that's one of the things that, this council should not vote for another development anywhere in Volusia County that's gonna contribute to the stormwater problem that, that we're now experiencing. And some of it, I just got a call this week, is right off forty-four, not close to, to this, but there, there is flooding going on all over the county. Now, we had a lot of rain. I was underwater two days ago. It strained off on our farm. But there are places that have been wet for years, four, five, six years because of developments creating perched water tables. So had that been the case here, it would have been an easy no vote for me. So you've, you know, I'm, I'm very glad to see that. I still have concerns. Wastewater and drinking water, it's all eventually will come from the city of Deland.
And they've already given us a capacity to service, and it will be a closed system, a water coming to us. There's an existing eight-inch water main already in Grand Avenue, and there's a twelve-inch water main along our western edge, and there's plenty of capacity, plenty of pressure. There is an existing force main on Grand Avenue that we will tie into. We will have to build two pumping stations for a project this size, and all that will be then built and given to the city of Deland, and they'll provide us our services.
Okay. Uh, council, anybody else have a question? I've been... Is there a motion? Billy Wheeler, was that your name flashing?
I, I was just going to go along. Mr. Chair, thank you very much for asking those questions because those were important to me also, and that did clear up an awful lot of things for me. It, it appears to me, and I'm just talking out loud, the things that we were in concern with on the last visit that you were here, that you have worked hard, and thank you for your participation in that also, to clarify and get all of those things workable for all of us. Um, it seems like we've checked off the endangered species, the trees, the wetlands, the trails, the eight-foot wall, a hundred-foot buffer. When this was planned in two thousand and thirteen or whatever, you know, whether I would have voted on that or not, that's neither here nor there because I didn't, I wasn't on council at that time. But here's where we are. We want that to be successful. That train station to be successful. We want those trips to be used, and I would, something is going to be developed there, and I would rather see this sort of a, a plan rather than just commercial people coming, getting off the station, and there's nothing but commercial around them. Yeah, I did, there's wonderful parks, there's going to be commercial there is, I, I meant industrial when I was speaking. People, um, that's an encouragement to me. So with all of that in mind, unless anyone else has a comment, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the zoning change by Billy Wheeler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Federari and Ben Johnson. You had a comment?
That's probably, this project right here has put me all over the place. I mean, truly, good questions been asked. You know, I, I was one of the few around here that was born and raised in this county and knows that property right there and, and knows the land, you know, as much. And I look at it, if it wasn't a train station, you know, the, the Sunrail, it'd be a lot simpler for me, really. A lot simpler. They say stick with the original. And I look at it and you hate, you know, I was born here. I'd love to see it like it was in nineteen sixty, but it's not. And we got handed Sunrail, this board right here got handed Sunrail. My first one, I was voting for it. As a matter of fact, I think, from what I recall, most of us tried to get it stopped in the Bay Area, but couldn't. You know, when that changed. And the whole thing behind it is to put development close to the station so you stop, you know, as much vehicular traffic and, and use this as a destination for Orlando for work, Orlando Sanford, et cetera. And it's, it's a tough, tough, tough decision. And I've had people that, not a whole lot, but a few people that say, don't do it. I'd sit out here and I'd see some of the people who don't want it, and I know them. And it's a tough, tough thing. You know, your questions about the drainage, well, that sits on that ridge that goes from basically just south of there to just in the north end of Glenwood, basically where that ridge peters out. And it is good drainage, good soaking ends, not, not where you're gonna see the water just sit and pool up like you were discussing a few minutes ago. They've worked hard. They did come in here, and we asked them to get with the people and say what could be done to make it work. And I don't know in good conscience, I mean, with all the other items on it, I think the closer we get to the station is where I'd see more, you know, density. But it is a project they've worked on hard, and who knows? I mean, it's, whether we like it in the long run or not, I think it is probably a pretty good project. I think we kind of have to look at what's the best, that or a lot of commercial right in there. I think we can put commercial, some better places where it's not quite so seen, and I think that may be worse for the area than this.
Sunrail. You wouldn't have heard me say this eight months ago, in January, December. I think though that that is one of this council's greatest successes. I wasn't for Sunrail any more than you were, any more than, I won't name the names. But, and the reason was because of the price tag for a little tiny bit of, of track into our county. I think we saved millions of dollars with the help of Jared Perdue, who has been a true friend of Volusia County as our area Transportation Secretary. With the, the low-cost loan that he was able to bring us, the help that he's bringing us now, and the help that he's gonna bring us in the future. I think we got out of it as inexpensively as possible, and it wasn't inexpensive. We have, we've got a ten million dollar investment in it, and we have to make it work. We have to get riders on it. I don't want as many as what John Nicholson wants in all in one area, but this is not the last development that's going to go there. For me, I'm gonna just be real, as clear as, as I can. I, I think you already understand it, that I, I was a definite no when I came in here today. Part of it was because of the picture I saw on the news trail. With, to me, it looked like barracks, not quite as good as the barracks my son's in, but barracks with some scraggly palm trees out front. I don't mind palm trees, but... So now I learn through the evidence of this hearing that it's, it's not gonna look just like that. So I, I just want to tell you both this, that we are all putting our reputations on the line with this vote. Because I don't think there's a one of us up here that doesn't love Volusia County and care about the way that it looks. And as part of economic development, we need to keep the county that looks, that's beautiful. And it is in danger because of overdevelopment that's not done right, that's crowding our roads and, um, putting our water in jeopardy, and we, we still haven't told, with that, we're, we're going to. We've got some things coming up that will, but... So I have one last question, and I don't, it's probably for Clay. The traffic studies, I mean, I mean, they were all approved, six hundred and forty-eight residences. That's, that's thirteen hundred more cars on the road, probably. So before you answer that, who, who is paying for, I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure, who is paying for the expansion of Grand Avenue and beautifying it?
The developer.
And, um, there was one other that I wrote down. Through impact fees or on top of impact fees?
On top of impact fees.
On top of impact fees.
In order to get impact fee credits, you have to be making improvements to thoroughfare road that are tied to capacity improvements.
Trail and sidewalks?
Trail, sidewalks are required. The trail is, was part of the conditions that we identified as needing to be done by the developer for addressing multi-modal needs.
Developers paying for that?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? In the picture, the, I believe it's a trail, looked like it was pavers. Are you really considering making that out of pavers?
No, it will be whatever the standards are established.
Oh, pavers would be beautiful, but it would be millions.
No, it would only, it would, it would probably be asphalt, it would be concrete. Whatever the standard is, we.
Well, you can do, you can go above standard.
Uh, we'll try to see where we can.
And I'm, I'm serious when I say that. I, I've said it three or four times here. This is, you're the first. You're setting the standard.
We are doing, if you start looking at some of the requirements, we are using pavers for our driveways in both the rear-loaded and front-loaded product. We are using pavers throughout. I just don't know that we, we had a plan on using pavers for the walkways.
I understand. So Clay, tell me about the traffic.
Yes, sir. The River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization. The River to Sea Transportation Planning Organization established minimum guidelines for traffic impact assessments that are used by the cities and Volusia County to assess what is the existing vested development and compare it to the proposed development for either comprehensive plan amendments that include amendments to the future land use map or rezonings, and actually all the way through to the concurrency. What this does is it requires a standardized process. They have to identify trip generation based on the vested use and the proposed use. And then they have to use the same model that is used throughout central Florida to distribute and assign those new trips, or old trips, whichever trips you're looking at, throughout the network, and identify where there are problems with the operations of intersections or segments. When you're analyzing traffic impacts, you're looking at road segments to make sure the flow of traffic. And then at the intersections, you're looking at the delay times and the amount of time it takes for each approach to get through the signal. They hired a group called TPD. They did the analysis utilizing the Institute of Traffic Engineers trip generation rates, which is recommended by the TIA guidelines. John Chaney and Melissa Winsett used that, basically analyzed and reviewed their report to determine if it was factual, accurate, and if we agreed with their methodology. Upon their review, they determined that it met all the criteria. They identified potential operational improvements. They also identified that there were no necessarily concurrency issues with regard to these segments. In other words, the amount of traffic being put on those roadways were within our acceptable level of service standards.
Somebody here today said that, one of the, somebody in the public said that 44 would have to be four lane. Do you see that?
That's a state road. We worked through the process to try and get any kind of widening. Obviously, we're going to have to work with the state DOT to determine the timing and the level of improvements that would be required there. I can tell you that we have been asking for operational improvements at the intersections of 15A and 44 for years.
I was going to ask you, have you ever sat there?
Yeah.
And sat there?
And sat there.
Now, without any other houses?
I agree.
All right. I really don't mean to filibuster, but this is important to everybody in Volusia County. And you have an unbelievable responsibility in your hands, as we do. So with that, I will call for the vote. I don't see any other. Pardon me? Oh, we got, you want me to talk until Barb comes back? Is that what you're asking me? Are you raising your hand? Can you do it in less than three minutes?
100%. Again, I'm Vicki Bradford-Chatham. They were talking about the drainage on the property, Hazen Road. I can tell you, I have images of my property that never flooded. When rains come, not massive rains, rains, myself and the neighbor at 720, my yard looks like a pond. I got 1.35 acres. My whole front end is apart. I have a 3,000-square-foot home. Her yard looks like a pond. So there is a drainage problem, sir. I'm telling you. There is a drainage problem. I don't have concrete on my property. And the FDOT redid the roads, and we all flood on the county side. The county doesn't help us. There is a flooding project, problem, and you need to address that. That is, that is going to be a problem out there. And the traffic, I'm telling you, is going to be massive. You can't put the cart before the horse. I know what I'm talking about. My husband deals with billion-dollar contracts through Duke Energy as a project manager. You can't. You'd be negligent. Every one of you that are sitting there, take a ride out there at 8:00 in the morning, 8:30, 3:30, 4:00. I'm telling you, it's going to have to be four-lane. And you don't do that after. That's what our problem is right now in Florida. We put up all this great stuff, and then we think, oh, we need to put more roads. And when I'm at the east side, sir, I'm at east side of Deland, not Daytona. Like, they're redoing the roads now, which is a hot mess. You think ahead. The roads will need to be widened. The impact, and on the schools, there's no more room at Woodward. You need to do your due diligence. That school is crowded. Citrus Grove, crowded. George Marx, crowded. They need to put a school out there. Where are these children going to go to school? Where are they going to go to middle school? Southwestern, 700. I'm a former PE teacher. Deland Middle, where I taught, 1,200. We don't have the schools, sir. We don't. And I know you're probably not thinking about that, but I do. And I'm sorry I just had to say that about the water because it is a problem. I'll be more than happy to show you my photos, what happens. And this just didn't happen this year. It happened two years ago, three years ago. Thank you for your time. You need to do your due diligence. You need to. I'm not saying this isn't beautiful. It looks kind of good right, right now. But let's see in the final product. They could still make money, and we could still have a good place out there. But not with 600 and something homes. You could still make it nice with 400. Thank you.
You did complete that in under three minutes, but just barely. Okay, it's 12:18. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the zoning change, please say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? And I'm going to, I'm going to vote nay. And knowing that I was going to lose this vote, and I'm doing it, I'm doing it partly in protest. I'm doing it because I, I don't believe that we're quite there yet with, with traffic. Stormwater, I'm less concerned about. The stormwater on Hazen is, I don't think affected by this property. I'm a believer in concurrency, and I agree that 44 should be widened. Nobody's going to ask you to widen it. So you've won the zoning change six to one. And I'm asking you to take that one vote against it as a plea to continue to keep your word and make this the standard bear for this area because we can't redo it afterwards. Thank you for listening to it.
... and we sure tried to get your vote. So I appreciate all your concerns and all your comments.
With that, it's 12:19. Can we break for lunch? Or do you want to plow through?
Nine and 10 are gone. So we only have three things, three short things.
Yeah. Let's knock it out.
What'd you say?
I said, let's knock it out. Rumble's done.
Okay.
My thought.
I'm hearing yeps all over. I was hungry. Nine and 10 are postponed till next meeting. Item 11, Ordinance 2021-37, creating Section 86-671 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding COVID-19 Administrative Leave Policy. Dana Page-Pender.
Dana Page-Pender, Human Resources. I'm here today requesting approval of Ordinance 2021-37, amending the Merit System rules and regulations. This amendment is a result of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and addresses administrative leave under certain circumstances. You may remember that under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, employees received 80 hours of COVID leave to use if they qualified for it. That leave expired at the end of December in 2020. And there was a surge at that time, so it was left in place for those who did not use that leave through June 11, 2021. By June, the vaccines were widely available, and we held employee events to make sure that there was an ease of access to the vaccines. This summer, we again saw a surge in COVID cases. This amendment amends Division 20 of the Merit Rules to be entitled Pandemics. And to this Division, Section 86-671 is added, which states that any employee who exhibits COVID-19 symptoms as determined by a healthcare provider will be eligible for up to 16 hours of COVID-19 administrative leave for testing purposes. To be eligible for this leave, an employee would provide COVID-19 test results. In many cases, the employee is tested here in the OHC, so they wouldn't have to provide the results. We would have them here on file. But in addition, any employee who is fully vaccinated, and fully vaccinated is defined as two weeks past their second Pfizer or Moderna shot, or one week, two weeks past their one-time Johnson &amp; Johnson shot. But if they were fully vaccinated, he or she would be eligible for up to a total of 40 hours of COVID-19 leave, or the equivalent of one work week for our non-eight-hours employees. Many of our public protection employees are not an eight-hour week, eight-hour-day employee. This leave is for fully vaccinated individuals who test positive for COVID-19 or who left quarantine in accordance with CDC guidelines. This leave would expire December 31, 2021, unless extended by council. This leave is not eligible for payout should an employee separate from the county. And this leave would be retroactive to July 1, 2021. We would also make reasonable accommodations as required by state and federal law. If passed, we would begin implementation with our non-bargaining employees while we continue to work through implementation with our bargaining units. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Heather Wallace?
So I'm looking at the 16 hours of leave. That's just to go get the test? Is that, is that what I heard?
And for test results as well.
Okay. And so that's typically two days? 16 hours, right? Does that still cover for our first responders since some of them don't, or most of them don't work eight-hour days?
We did the 16 hours. They typically go through the Department of Health, working through with our bargaining units with the impacts. I have had that question. So right now, it's the 16 hours that's, that's the maximum. But as we hear from our bargaining unit employees, that's one of the questions that they would look to have addressed.
So would it be possible for us to simply change it then and just say up to two days worth? So that no matter what employee, it would cover them?
Sure.
Two days' worth of leave time? Okay. So I'll make that motion? Is there a second?
Second.
You're making a motion to increase the time to 48 hours, two days, by opposed, second by Gertman?
Well, I think there's more describing it as two days.
Right, not, not, not saying an hour time, just saying.
About two, two days.
Say two, two days' worth of work.
Two work days.
Yeah, two work days.
We need to talk about that a little bit. Right for the testing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ben Johnson?
We need, we need to think about that a little bit because you're talking, all right, normal people say that one. If you get to ambulance or sheriff's department, I can see the two days because that would take it. But when you say two days and you get to fire, you're talking about six or eight days off. You're talking 24 hours of leave, I mean, 48 hours of leave if you say two days. But they still, you know, you're still putting the chances of right there, actually, two, four, six, seven, eight, nine days off versus what the rest of them get. I could see saying with fire that you give them a full shift, which is 24 hours. You give the ambulance or the fire, which are 12, two shifts, which will get them there. But you're giving a lot more to certain groups than others in that manner. We have to take care of all of our people. But, but you're putting a lot, a lot of extended leave in certain places. We just have to think about how long it's in there. You know, I'd say with the fire, give them a 24-hour shift, which is three, you know, anybody else would be three days. And the rest of them, you know, the other emergencies where you have two days because most of them are working those shifts are together. And that's how it is, just to get it through here. So I think we need to think about that a little.
County attorney, is it, is it deputy? Okay, it is Heather Wallace.
We could use some language that says the equivalent of two work days. So then regardless of what their shift is, it would basically give them two work days off in order to get their tests and get the results back.
That was the motion. Yeah.
Yeah.
Did that answer your concern? Okay. Then there's no other?
I'm not done.
Oh? Go ahead.
And then...
You don't want to deal with your motion first?
Sure.
All in favor of the two-day motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Go ahead, Hannah.
And then, and then Dana. So this covered people up to June, am I correct? Or not this, but we, we have covered people up to June, am I correct in that?
Right.
So we're basically looking at between June and December, the end of December, covering them with this pot? Is that correct?
From July 1, when we start to see the surge again through December, yes.
Okay. And so my question would be, I just want to make sure that we're actually, is there anyone that took off for COVID that this would not be covering them from July 1 to now, for whatever reasons?
If they were not fully vaccinated and, and they had COVID, they wouldn't be eligible for the 40 hours of leave.
Correct. Okay. So then my question would be, this, this monies was given to us from the federal government to address COVID response? Not specifically COVID response for vaccinated or unvaccinated, correct?
So we're using ARPA dollars to, right?
So, so the monies are coming from the federal government to respond to COVID? And the federal government is not differentiating between who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated? And so I don't like the idea of us saying that we're only going to cover those who are vaccinated and not even, not wanting to get into that discussion, but that we, I would, I move that we change that language to encompass anyone that ends up with COVID, that falls under this guideline, whether vaccinated or not, so that they are covered. Because obviously, the intent is, right? We don't want them, we don't want anyone with COVID to be coming to work and infecting anyone else, right? And these monies are from the federal government for COVID response period. So they are being given to us to respond to COVID. So whether someone's vaccinated or not, we should be responding to COVID and, and covering that, I think. So I move that we change that language from fully vaccinated, or we just strike the language, fully vaccinated. Who is fully vaccinated, for any, it should say for any employee. And up to 40 hours of leave for any employee and test positive for COVID or is required to be absent from work in accordance with CDC guidelines. So, because the guidelines are the guidelines.
Do you have a motion on the table? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Lowery. Ben Johnson?
You know, it's a person's personal preference. And they're right, if they don't want to take a COVID shot. And, but if you do take it, I think we should, you know, it's less likely it's going to cost us as a county near as much money. That's already been pretty much proven through medical guidelines that the people who have had the COVID shots survive it best, stay sick less, and die less. Now, we're taking care of everybody with 16 hours, whether they had the COVID shot or not. But I just can't go the idea of us, you know, we're trying to take and get the people to take the COVID shots when not requiring them to. But give them a little bit extra if they did take the COVID shots. And it comes out of our budgets when people are all sick, no matter what, whether it's overtime, whether it's our medical cost, or whatever it is, when they don't take it all. And I can't support the idea of going 40 hours if you willfully didn't take the shot.
George Rettle?
I was just going to point out, if it is the council...
I was just going to point out, if it is the council's will on that, that the budget number that is there would have to be increased. We don't know what that would be at this time, but I would just ask for permission then to use the coronavirus local fiscal recovery monies as needed, rather than, you know, having the total budget item of two forty-five. I won't know what that number is, but it will be a lot more than the two forty-five.
Do we know what percentage of county employees are vaccinated?
We do not.
And how do we know that? Are we so, so are we now asking all the employees to tell us if they get person, I mean, how are we applying this?
So it would be strictly voluntary, and if they, if asked a state it with the fully vaccinated, they would volunteer to provide that information to us.
Well, I mean, I can see, I see the argument for pushing for the vaccination, but I also still think we should take care of our employees if they get sick. And this money, literally, it's the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds that we are using
Barb Gertman? Were you done, Heather? Barb Gertman?
So, so yes, it is the COVID dollars, but the vaccine is provided through the COVID dollars as well. The access is free, and it's been demonstrated to lessen the cost and the severity. And I think it's, it is, I guess the county is trying to provide an incentive and an encouragement to try to have a more healthy community and a more healthy workplace. So in addition to wearing the masks, I think that is encouraging and incentivizing other few authorities that we do have, or a few opportunities that we do have. So I can't, I can't support that change.
Yes, I also cannot support that. Those who are unvaccinated, if they do run into those circumstances, they do have sick leave, this is incentivizing, and we do know the cost if someone contracts it, if they've been vaccinated, or it appears that it is less than what it is for an unvaccinated person. So I cannot support that portion.
Heather Post.
I just want to make sure on this specific discussion, if council has finished, because I was going to ask on a different, I was going to ask another question.
We probably need to take care of this motion first, so I will, boy, talk about opening up Pandora's box. I'm concerned, that to me, this feels like we're snuggling up to a vaccine mandate. And I don't agree that the science has said that everybody that's vaccinated is safe and less expensive. In fact, I just heard a two-hour discussion by Dr. Malone, who invented the mRNA delivery system, not the vaccine, but the delivery system, who was warning against the very opposite, that the vaccine attacks one mode of the virus ability to replicate. And if you're sixty-five and older, his words, get the vaccine. If you're younger than that, don't get the vaccine, because you're actually forcing the virus to mutate in ways that the vaccines won't protect you against it, and creating a superbug that we may, we may never get rid of COVID-19. So I don't think it's as clear as what we're saying, and I'm just not in favor of a vaccine mandate. I don't see anybody else that wants to talk.
Yeah, I do.
Oh, go ahead, Fred.
Just real quick, we're also leaving out people like me, who've had it, who now have a natural immunity, who it would actually be dangerous for me to take a vaccine at this point. So we've got people with the staff, the county, who already have had it and have a natural immunity, and that needs to be considered as well in this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for catching that. And I'll call for Heather Post.
So before we actually do vote, then, I really want to stress on this point. Like, I'm not getting into the discussion on vaccine mandates and everything else. It does appear that that's sort of what we're doing, but the point of the motion is not to, you know, get into the argument on whether the mandate is good or the mandate is bad. It's just to say, look, if our employees get COVID, period, that we would take care of them. So not, that's the point to me. Thank you.
Barbara Gertman?
And I think the word mandate is inaccurate. No one has made any statement of mandating anyone to do anything. Everything is optional. It's just whether or not you access an incentive or you don't. So, and I also don't think we should be providing medical guidance based on somebody making a statement, when there are a number of statements about the, and a number of proofs about how vaccine has improved or assisted throughout this process. So, yeah, I just don't think we need to put mandating something on the record, when that is not how I see what's being presented here. What's being presented is an incentive, and I don't think we're anywhere close to making a mandate.
I understand. And I didn't say this is a mandate, I said, I feel like we're snuggling up to it. And I am in favor of not censoring medical advice on this, because we need to get past COVID-19. And if we, so that's why I brought up Dr. Malone, who happens to be a virologist and MD, and the creator of the mRNA delivery system. Danny Robbins?
I kind of see everything that you're saying, Chair and Barb and Fred. Just to make this fair across the boards, can we open it up to if somebody has the natural immunity, if they have, if they're showing the positive antibodies? You know, last thing we want to do is segregate people, you know? This is meant for recovery, and they're showing, there's so much cross-information here, and we're not going to get into that. Can we open it up? It is what it's intended for. I think it would be fair, it would respect people's choice, it's not going to be mandating anything, but it will be fair across the board, because really, at the end of the day, there's too many unknowns with this to this day. And that's just my opinion. So if we can open it up to people with natural immunity, that'd be great.
So you amend the motion?
I am not, I'm not willing to amend the motion, only because I don't want to get, I don't want to get into the weeds with immunities and any of this. I just want to take care of our employees. If you get COVID, we'll take care of you. The federal money, federal government's giving us money to do that. So just very basic, not even getting in the weeds. I don't care if you have immunity, I don't care if you have an antibody, I don't care if you have a vaccination, or don't have a vaccination, or wear a mask, or don't wear a mask. If you get COVID, don't come in, and we will help you with the monies that the federal government is giving us for specifically that purpose. That's, that's the point of the motion. So I'm not willing to amend the motion, but if we want to vote on the motion, and you want to make a separate motion, that's fine.
Let's vote.
Did you want to say something, Dana, before we vote?
Just add to, I know Mr. Robbins just brought up about the, and we heard about the natural immunity, and I know there's a ninety-day wait period before you can get the vaccine, once you've been positive. That's definitely something that we can look into, because there is a period that Department of Health won't administer vaccines.
And Barb, before we vote? Barb Gertman? No? Okay, let's vote. Heather, can you restate your motion? Carissa, can you restate her motion?
Well, Ms., I, Ms. Post.
Go ahead, Mike.
My understanding of Ms. Post's motion was to revise paragraph B of the proposed ordinance to require reference, or to remove reference to vaccination status for eligibility for the forty-hour leave provision.
That's clear. I think we can vote on that. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Carissa, would you call the roll?
Mr. Johnson? Dr. Lowry?
Yes.
Ms. Post?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins? Ms. Wheeler?
No.
Ms. Gertman?
No.
Mr. Brower?
Yes, so the motion carries four to three. Thank you. Have you had one more?
Do you have one more question?
I'm still hungry.
So my question is more for the first responders, but obviously for all employees. Up until this point, do we have, do we have employees that have, according to CDC guidelines, have had to be out for COVID, for whatever reasons, if they've been, for whatever reasons, that they have had to use their own personal sick leaves? Do we still have that, where those things have not been covered up to the July first point?
Between June eleventh, June eleventh ended COVID leave. So at that point, it would have been personal leave.
But prior to June eleventh, is what I'm saying, do we have, so all personnel were covered for any COVID?
They were covered for the eighty hours.
Right.
Some may have been out longer.
So again, especially with our first responders, I mean, they're, they are the first responders, they are responding to COVID cases?
So they're a little different.
Okay.
We had first responder pay that went above and beyond the eighty hours.
And what was that doing?
There was not a limit on the first responder pay, because of the nature of the work that they do.
So we do not have first responders who have had to use their own sick leave for COVID up to June eleventh?
What I'd like to do, if possible, we can bring that back. I think we will do is go research and find out what we have for Dana.
You know now, or?
For one hundred percent certainty, no. But we, again, we can look into it.
Okay. So, and then after, so from June to December now, if we have first responders who are beyond this amount, they're, it's not going to be covered, correct?
From July first through June, correct? It would be the forty-hour, the equivalent work week. Once that was exhausted, it would be personal leave.
So can, if that was effectual up till June eleventh, because they are our first responders, and they're responding to these cases, shouldn't we make it effective through just the end of December, counsel? So my motion, so I'm going to make a motion on that, that we apply the same SOP or the same standard that we have applied up to June for our first responders, to continue through the end of December. And especially since we're specifically using the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, which is literally the point of those funds.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? And there being no second, the motion fails.
I'll just say, I think it's harsh that we're not providing our first responders with the, that they have to take money out of their own pockets.
Point of order.
Respond to this.
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
Motion failed. All of the talk on it should cease.
Well, okay, I got my sentence out.
Okay, is that what, your name's still on the screen, Ben, did you have some?
Yes, I do have a question. I think it's for our attorney, and it's formed to consider. I mean, we've made a motion, and it passed, so, you know, but that's not it. Does this, does this include, like, the constitutional officers? I think we had to think about that. And does it include people on the bargaining units? And I'm not against either one, but I think it's something we have to look at.
Nothing we do here includes the constitutional officers. This is just, this is just the county government. They can choose, make whatever rules they deem.
This, the prior COVID leave was a federal mandate, expired. Dana can correct me, I think in December. The manager extended that through June eleventh to extend that, but that was not something we had to do, but something he did. This proposed ordinance would change your merit rules, and those are adopted by reference in your collective bargaining agreement. So whatever, if you do change this today, it would apply both to your bargaining units and your non-bargaining employees.
Thank you. And you just, you made everybody else take their name off the screen, so thank you. Well done. Okay, we'll move to item twelve, sponsorship request.
We just need to take one last vote on a motion on the ordinance as amended.
I'm sorry. All in favor of the ordinance as amended, say aye.
Just need a motion for that, right?
But we didn't have a motion?
We didn't have a motion to adopt it, we had motions to amend.
Oh, I see, to adopt the entirety.
Yeah, but can we get clarity on the whole?
The changes?
Because was this last motion that failed, it wasn't necessary, because they're covered either way? So is that my understanding?
No.
So let me, if I could, Mr. Chair, I'll just address, and Dana, I know you're here.
Yes.
We're going to, Dana, we're going to call you back up to the podium, so you can correct me. The council enacted a change to page eleven dash three, paragraph B one, to remove reference to the vaccine requirement to be eligible for the up to forty hours of COVID-19 leave. And on the following page, eleven dash four, change the reference to paragraph B two, replace the sixteen hours reference to the equivalent of two work days. Those two motions passed, so if there were a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended, it would incorporate those changes and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Heather?
So there was just the question of, the last question about the first responders is, may not be relevant, because it applies to them anyway, that they're covered anyway, but they are not in fact covered, which is the point of the motion, correct? So I want to make sure that all counsel is clear, that they are not covered beyond, they have to use their own leave.
They're included in the two work days for testing, as well as the forty hours of the equivalent of the work week.
Right, okay.
Yes.
But it would apply to all county employees.
Right.
So that, so there was no addition, no need for the additional motion? Because they are covered? That's my point. So I will make a motion to accept, to, oh, they were both your motion, right? So.
Adopt the motion as amended.
Yes.
Or the ordinance as amended.
So we are adopting the ordinance as amended.
Yes.
Second.
Please. So, motion to adopt as amended by Gertman, second by Lowry. Did you have another question before the vote? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Dana. Kevin, you will take us to conclusion in 12 and 13.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Kevin Captain, Community Information, Honorable Members of Council, Staff. Item 12 is a, staff received a sponsorship request from Daytona State College Foundation for their Boots and Bling Annual Gala. The event will be held October 21st from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event is for the community to come together and enjoy an evening of food and camaraderie while supporting the students at DSC. 100% of every dollar raised will go to, towards scholarships for students in various programs at DSC. An individual ticket for the event is $250, and they are requesting a sponsorship from the County Volusia for $1,000.
Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Wheeler. Is there a second? Second by Robbins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries seven to zero.
Okay.
Community events.
The events update. Kevin Captain, Community Information. First, give you an update on the virtual webinar that Community Services is planning for October 1st. It's titled Getting the Right Tool for the Right Job. And staff will be joined by panelists from the planning industry to discuss questions on affordable housing. To register, you can click on the county calendar on volusia.org. I'll take you through that in just a minute, and you can click on the registration link. DeBarry Hall continues to have small, safe events coming up through the remainder of September and into the October. We have line dancing, learning about palm trees, edible landscapes, and some, some Halloween-themed things that are coming up. A creepy candlelight tour, and, and we're also working with them with creating a Volusia Magazine feature, so stay tuned for that. Also want to mention the five-year road plan workshops. The Department of Public Works is updating its five-year road plan, and staff is seeking comments from the residents for this. We've had one already, and we have four more workshops. There could be a change on the last one, which currently is slated for October 7th here at, in the TCK Administration Building. We'll let you know as soon as we know if we end up having to change that date. Also, just want to mention the Echo Advisory Board. The Advisory Committee will meet on Thursday, September 23rd. Members will receive a presentation on living shorelines and discuss the 2022 annual Echo goals and the progress of the Open Echo Grants. So for more information, you can reach out to Brad Burbaugh. And then this is just how to get to the county calendar. Under News, County Calendar, and then, and basically the whole month will come up, or you can choose any month. Also want to mention our four, we have four current campaigns on social media that continue to run. They weren't going to expire the end of this month. We're going to extend them one more month into October. And this is Backs Up Volusia, Talk to Doc, Getting Back to the Moments We Miss, which is encouraging the safety practices, and the best way to thank, for example, a frontline worker, a healthcare worker. Our impressions on those are probably about 700,000, so we're definitely seeing it, and you're probably seeing it on your smartphone, so it's definitely being effective. We'll move quickly to a coronavirus update, and Mr. Johnson just got here, so that's great. I do want to mention, we do have, and this was posted to YouTube and also on Volusia Magazine this past Sunday, Community Information sat down with the Chief Medical Officers of Halifax Health and Advent Health, as well as the medical examiner, Dr. James Vulture, and had a 50-minute interview on the, basically the current crises in our local healthcare system. And so it was a factual interview, and so that's available on YouTube for anyone to check out. And I do want to just, you know, publicly thank Dr. Vulture, Dr. Crossman Halifax, and Dr. Smith Advent for, they have really been wonderful partners through this whole crisis, and, and for them to be able to carve out the time to come and talk with us has just been tremendous. So, any questions before we bring up Mr. Johnson?
Paul Gertman, had one?
I just wonder, how effective is reaching community through YouTube?
So, good question, how effective is it through YouTube? So, we are trying to build our YouTube presence, and our goal is to continue to get people to, to go to YouTube. And one of the ways that we'll do that is, and we'll continue to do it, is through Facebook with links so that people can go to YouTube and look at the other videos. Because, for example, right now, we have Volusia Magazine on WDSC TV on Sunday nights, but you got to watch it on Sunday night. And we're going to take those features and split them up, and we're moving them to Volusia, or to YouTube, so that viewers can just pull out their smartphone and watch it at any time, at any place. So there's a growing need for us to boost our presence on YouTube, and let's face it, when, when we get for information, people love videos. And it's certainly a great platform for getting our message out there, getting our word out there. And there's different platforms by which we can get people to drive to go to YouTube.
Because I'm, I mean, I get so many things pushed to my cellphone, but none of this type of community information. So I'm not a YouTube user, so unless it's something specific I'm already looking for, I'm not encouraged to even see this. So how, how can we push it where we'd have a broader audience?
Are you a Facebook user?
Yes.
Then it'll, it'll be on Facebook.
Right, but I still have to go look for it. I'm saying, I have all kinds of videos popping up on my phone when I'm on Facebook, but none of them are this type of information. So what am, what am I doing wrong? And if, if I'm not getting it, that means my community's not getting it.
Some of that is driven by the Facebook algorithm, and we can discuss that with you, you know, offline. But, for example, as we, as we transition to some of the Volusia Magazine features onto YouTube, YouTube also has a protocol. And so if you, if you begin to look at certain patterns when you're on social media, though, very similar types of videos or categories or subject matters will pop up on, using that protocol. So a lot depends on the user's previous history and the protocol built in. And we can, we can discuss more of that on the one-on-one, but certainly that's, Facebook has its own as well, too. Now, when it comes to, if we want to just push it out like we are doing these four campaigns, we're paying for those. So there's money we're putting behind that to make sure that it gets put out to, so we extend our reach and we extend the impressions of it. But that, that's the marketing piece that costs, costs the money.
Right, but we have the money for that purpose, especially involving COVID, so I think we should be pushing it certainly to get it as far and as wide as it can, so, but thank you.
And we certainly are, and we certainly can do more. We can add, we can put more money to it.
Thank you.
If that's the, the pleasure of the council, we absolutely can.
I don't, I don't know how much we're spending on it, but I just think that that's certainly a broad enough concern to ensure that that information gets as far and wide as possible. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
All right, good afternoon. So as of, to date, we have 71,254 COVID-19 cases among Volusia County residents, and 1,324 COVID-19 deaths reported in Volusia County since the start of the pandemic. Two weeks ago, when I was here, I think I reported 1,080. So of course, that doesn't mean that there's been 244 deaths in the last two weeks, but that's just a product of the lag in the way that deaths are reported. When examining the cases, 23,139 were from the 2020 calendar year, and 48,115 are from 2021. This graph, similar to the graph from a couple weeks ago, depicts good news. We're continuing to experience a decline in cases and case positivity. As of today, our 14-day positivity rate is down to 13.64%. And although this is good news, as we mentioned before, we want to ensure that we're continuing to wash up, back up, mask up, because our transmission level is still relatively high. It's at 339, which is still a decrease. Two weeks ago, I reported it at 396. But that's the number that we were saying, that standard is 100. That's 100 cases per 100,000 population is high. So we're at 342, or 339, which is still high, but that number's declining as well, along with the positivity rate. Our vaccination rates continue to climb slowly. These percentages represent individuals who are 12 and up and have received a vaccine. Last week, there were 2,185 individuals vaccinated. And then this graph depicts the number of Volusia County residents who have visited emergency departments or urgent care facilities with complaints or diagnoses related to COVID-19. The spike in August aligns with our case peak, and at the end of, at the beginning of August and the end of July. And then, of course, we see September, that's not complete yet, but when we look at the average visits per day, it's still looking like it's a significant decline. In June, let's see, in June, the daily average visit was 32 visits per day. In July, it's 121 visits per day. In August, 233, and then so far in September, it's at 142. So we see that declining as well. Some more good news, new admissions to hospitals decreased by 40% over the last seven days. Two weeks ago, we reported the seven-day new admission number was at 242. Now it's at 96. So of course, at the Department of Health, we continue to vaccinate at all four of our locations, and we are still doing PCR testing at the Holson Back location, as well as Strickland Ave, Strickland Boulevard in Orange City. I haven't seen any recent updates, and maybe Mr. Captain can provide those in terms of the numbers that happened in that Curative in Nomi for testing. But I do know that since those two sites opened up, it seems as though the testing demand has leveled off a little bit. We're still booking appointments for testing same or next day. The Ormond Beach Monoclonal Antibody Treatment Center has received 4,668 visits since August 19th. And over the last three weeks, the treatment center averaged over 1,100 patients per week. So it's still doing well, and there's been a lot of positive feedback from people who have visited the center. And then, of course, we are offering the third dose of the vaccine, which is recommended for individuals who are 65 and older, and those who are at high risk for severe illness from COVID-19. And we're providing at all of our sites. Other than that, that is all I have for you today.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Thank you very much. And that? That brings us to the final round of public participation. This will be, we have, we have one. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. To clarify my concern on those housing for Sun Rail. I, my concern was the $8 million coming down the pike. It is a big chunk of money. Secondly, is that I live on the east side, which will never see Sun Rail, and there's no benefit whatsoever to us for Sun Rail, yet we're going to come up with $6 million or more of that $8 million. So that's why I'm looking for the development around the Sun Rail station to help pay for it. Because the more it generates, the less comes out of our pockets. Several things, the utilities, when you're paying for the utilities for people, are we making sure that they are not excessive electric bills? My neighbor would have a 500 electric bill, and my electric bill was 64 bucks. And the difference was that when the air conditioner is running, it's, it's super cold, and he leaves his windows and his doors open. And it runs for 24 hours a day, even though he's not there for 14 hours. Those kind of things, I think, are wasteful, and we shouldn't have to pay for it. So I'm asking if we look at that, if there are excessive bills? Because Pete Gamble did that with our hut housing. He put all of hut housing, except for Windsor and Maile, on their own bills, because people would leave their doors open and their electricity running. So I'm wanting, making sure that we don't pay for that. Hiring problems, I was talking, we're thinking of cutting back our hours on Seabreeze. So for the last two months, every Friday and Saturday night, I'm on Seabreeze to see what the actual reasons are and what we can do. And talking with one of the cops, the recruiting, part of the problem is that we don't have enough police officers to cover it. And his reasoning was that the 20-year retirement is a, is good for us. And when we went up to 25, which I pushed for, it hurt recruiting. So I understand that you all are at 30 years, so I want to make sure that your 30 years is not hurting your recruiting, or is there anything that we're doing that hurts recruiting? Because there was a comment at one of the meetings, which I'm not going to be at this afternoon, that the, I think you hired 12 people or something like that, and he listed the, the number of people that were new to the budget, and that's why it was part of the budget. But I think there's also, there's a huge number of people that are not being hired because we just can't get them. I think there was a gentleman that came from the Corrections that spoke on it, from the Fire Department that spoke on it, and I'm sure there's several. So there's going to be a huge bump in, in the, the need for employees in certain areas. Third, put in, and it's a personal thing, put in money in the budget, because I talked to the guy from Ocean Center, in the future, to put out an RFP, to make that as nice as possible, with the fewest amount of money coming out of the budget in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. George Reptinow.
I have nothing new today, and we'll see you later tonight.
Michael Bay?
Yes, just have a brief update for you on redistricting by Sabrina Slack. Think we have some good news.
Is there good news concerning redistricting?
Be optimistic. Sabrina Slack, Assistant County Attorney. The update would be, we sent you out a memo. We got the software that we have updated late on the 10th. So on the 13th, we were able to populate the existing districts. All the districts grew, but of course, the growth wasn't exactly equal. So we had growth, so the, the overall population's 553,542. So the exact equal population for each district would be 110,708.4, rounded up to nine for our purposes. Each district grew, but the growth was unequal. District one, four and five all had positive growth, and two and three had negative growth from that exact equal number. So District one had the biggest overage, Dr. Lowry, of 4,724. District four was next with 141, and District five has 386 positive. The negatives are Districts two and three, which are under the equal number, which is 2,963 for District two, and 2,290 for District three. So now the redistricting process is trying to meet those criteria that we had agreed upon earlier. If you recall, our criteria are keeping the incumbents in their districts, trying to get a population difference of one, plus or minus 1% for each district. So that would mean approximately the districts could be over or under 1,107 people. So basically, for, to reach that criteria, you have a bracket of a district having a population as low as 109,602 people, or as high as 1,111,816 people. That's the 1% over or 1% under. But now, the other criteria where we are preserving the integrity of municipal boundaries, where possible, some boundaries were already split. Keep intact large concentrations of minority populations. Keep intact large concentrations of minority populations, preserve communities of interest, and keeping the districts compact and contiguous. So now, we have the numbers. We know where the population lies. We are... Our GIS staff, IT staff, Brandon Barnett, is in his laboratory creating maps as we speak. So he's trying to meet those criteria, working with the districts we have, working with the population numbers we have. So on our redistricting calendar, the next thing that you will see is we will make an agenda item for October 5th, so that we can present maps to you. Should be start seeing updates with that agenda item as we go forward to October 5th. After October 5th, we have our first joint meeting with the school board on October 11th, and we have another meeting with them on the 18th and the 28th. So all through October, what we should be doing is presenting maps and discussing how the population's going to shake out into the districts. Questions?
Mr. Chair, I just would say, particularly want to thank Sabrina for all her work on this and Brandon Barnett. This is his first redistricting effort. Al Hill, I think he went through four of these.
Yes.
Over the course of 40 years.
This would have been his fourth. He did three.
This would have been his fourth. Retired this summer, must deserve retirement. So, and I know we're in regular contact with the school board. Set aside three joint meeting dates if necessary. Doesn't mean you have to have all three. Maybe there could be some mutual agreement on a plan before then. And really, the month of November, really set aside, your public work staff has to write legal descriptions for the boundaries once you select them, so you can be in a position to adopt the final map in December. And so I know we've all been put in kind of a tight time schedule, but I'm glad we got an extra two weeks with the release of this recent data.
The data release was going to be September 30th with the census. It was on the 16th. Brandon Barnett, who is our GIS person, does say that the software... He was practicing on the older software with the 2010 numbers before the 2020 came in. He said the software is much more user-friendly and usable, so we're hoping that the revisions will go more smoothly than they had 10 years ago. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll make our timeline.
And as Sabrina said, well, she's going to be setting up some time with Brandon, with each of you, to offer some time to kind of just walk through the process before October 5th meeting, if that's something you would like.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sabrina. Okay, Ben Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Hey. Good afternoon. I just want to bring up one thing that I think is pretty important. At the last meeting, the chair took it upon himself to update everybody in the world in regard to my health and hospitalization status. The chair did not have my permission to do that. I think that we need to be careful what we say from the dais about any other council member, whether they're on vacation or whatever. I think it can cause problems. That's the first difficulty I had, that the update was given without my permission. The second problem I had is nearly everything he said was an after. And I had just spent... I had just barely been in the hospital. I hadn't even contacted my parents or my sister or anybody. And I had church members that, you know, or senior members that are not attending, and I had to spend the afternoon trying to clarify to them that I was not at death's door and so forth. So I think we need to be very careful when we say anything about another council member, whether maybe they're on vacation. Geez, so-and-so's on vacation. Well, while their house got broken into this week. I think we have to be very careful of sharing that personal information, especially when you don't have permission. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I apologize. No good deed goes unpunished. Heather Post.
I wanted to respond to... John Nicholson mentioned something about the 30-year, the state retirement. But just letting everyone know, because very evidently, when the state changed the retirement for a lot of our first responders and made it longer, it certainly does affect a lot of things, right? But we do have some pending legislation this year that is being proposed that is going to hopefully bring that back down. So just letting you know that, and we'll keep you updated for sure. So that definitely needs to come back. The other thing was, I wanted to make sure with admin, when we have agenda updates, I know we've mentioned this before, but when we have presentations or anything for the upcoming agendas, when that's emailed to us, that's really good that it's emailed sometimes. But as we've discussed many times, that we all get a lot of emails, and we may not see everything. But if it is an agenda presentation or anything having to do with the agenda, that should... I feel like that should be included in the agenda updates that we get, that are printed and attached to our agendas, and also part of the online agenda information as well. So I just wanted to make sure that any information that is provided in the meetings from staff is also included in that. And it's just been on a few occasions where it's just sent to us in an email. And so want to make sure all the bases are covered, so if we could do that from now on. Unless there's any... Unless anyone on council has any issue with that. Not seeing any, so I'm going to take that as direction. And that's all I have.
Billy Robbins. Billy Wheeler.
Yes. First of all, I do want to clarify something. Fred, I apologize to you and the chair. I don't... I don't want him to get hit with all this, because I know I was texting with you and getting your updates. I remember asking you, is it okay to share? And I did share it with him. And I might have even encouraged him to share it. So I apologize for that. I guess I misunderstood your direction with me. So I didn't want him to take the whole fall on that. I sincerely apologize, Fred, and I do understand.
Yeah. Just to clarify, I guess I really wasn't expecting it to be shared publicly. I was just wanting to let you guys know, because you'd asked. Anyway.
And we know that.
Thanks.
And I know that now. And I just didn't want him to get the full blunt on that, because it was part me too, and I apologize. Okay. The one thing I do want to ask is, yesterday, I was contacted by the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I am on that board, as well as the chair. And they manage the Regional Resilience Cooperative, which I am also on that committee, and I'm on their subcommittee. So the Cooperative convenes stakeholders across the eight-county region to work together with resiliency issues. The Planning Council has applied for a portion of the funding made available from the state through the resilient Florida legislation that's out there now. So they had called me yesterday to ask if we would sponsor, because the grant funding can only be provided to a local government, and the Planning Council has asked Volusia Council to be the sponsor partner to receive the funds. All work would be conducted by the Planning Council. The grant proposal is $425,000 with no match required from us. This is just us sponsoring them. The only contribution that we would have would be the small amount of staff time to manage the grant, and they would give us all the information on that. And those grants, part of it is to amplify the Volusia pilot on conservation lands to additional counties in the region, expanding green infrastructure efforts, conduct a housing needs and vulnerability assessment, conduct an audit of the East Central Florida Regional Planning Commission 2060 Strategic Regional Policy Plan, and develop a region-wide climate vulnerability assessment for all local government partners. So I would ask if it would be okay with the council that I can direct staff to bring something back to us to sponsor this at no cost to us, but it would certainly be an advantage to us. So if it's okay, if I can have everybody's consent for them to bring it back at the next meeting.
Would you prefer a motion, Mr. County Manager?
Yes.
Okay. So that is my motion, that I would like to sponsor the application from the resiliency Planning Council for a grant in the amount of $425,000.
Well, what we need is... What we need is, I'm just saying, a motion to direct us to come back with an agenda item.
And that is my direction.
Got it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Danny Robbins. You got Billy as the... No, I don't see him for the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And none opposed. Motion carries.
And that's everything for me.
Thank you. Barb Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. I believe there is a sickle cell grant that didn't find a home, that I'm going to ask council if they will support me in tabling that as I work with Department of Health and some other local programming to identify the best way forward to maximize the use of those dollars and hopefully redefine programming in regards to sickle cell for Volusia County. So that's on my radar to work, to work out and identify the best way forward. But at this time, I don't believe there's an application, and if there is, it's something to work through. So I would ask the council support and allow me to work through that. Yes, do I need a motion?
Do you need a motion for that?
So I make that motion to table those dollars.
Okay. Motion to table the sickle cell...
Grant.
Grant by Gertman, second by Robbins. All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, I don't think you mean table. I think you want us to actually agenda it.
Well, I want to hold it so I have time to review.
You want us to return back with an agenda item for approval of those funds?
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, if I could. I believe we sent out a notice of funding availability and did not get a response for that particular. And so we'll hold that money aside until additional work can be done.
Okay.
In conjunction with Mrs. Gertman and our team, to see if we can go out for another notice of funding availability, so we can place that money in the community.
So hold.
Hold sounds better than table.
It does.
Hold for further evaluation.
Table.
So hold those funds, please.
Okay. Does the second still apply? The second are still... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Only other thing I have, I... Over the past two weeks, we had the ribbon cutting for the Dr. Joyce and Cusek Resource Center. Well-attended partners, many of the partners were there. And I think the benefit of it being a year later was you were able to then see a number of the partners who have participated, a number of the positive and successful programs that have already happened there, and just a lot of great things that are happening. Right after that was the Spring Hill Turn Festival that is also improving each year. So I think the investments are paying off in that area. This past Saturday, I was at the bridge and there ribbon cutting in the same opportunity. It's a year later, so you get to hear about the successes. You get to see the partners of one we are, one of those partners, but a number of the community partners, the faith-based groups and organizations that have helped make that a success. And it's great to have our resources in our community where those who need help can get it and still feel like they are part of what I call the community with a heart. So I was really grateful to be there for those two events and know that we're... Our dollars are being invested in that way and making a difference in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Post, I think I skipped you.
No, you got me.
You were done. Okay. So it's just me. Just two quick things. One, I want to go back to the vote we took on Sun Rail. My two overriding reasons for that is, as I stated, one was traffic and one was water. I think we really need to look at water with water availability, water purity, before we do any development. But the thing that really... And this is not assigning blame to anybody in the county, but it seems, doesn't seem beneficial to me that it was eight years ago that we passed the overlay. We knew this was coming. 44 in Woodland or Spring Garden were already crowded, and there's still no plans to forelane that and fix that. And yet, we have a road to nowhere in Williamson for a potential hazard development that we did years ago. I think we need to do a better job in our planning for traffic. And water is a big issue. Speaking of water, there is some good news. I want to... We put on the... Or we'll put on the agenda for October 5th, a presentation by Dr. Goodrow, who was the creator of the reef system, and also Brian LaPointe, with a little change of what some of you might have expected, what you've seen and how it first started. It actually started with the discovery of the reef and Dr. Goodrow with Sons of the Beach and the CEO Business Alliance. So I want to say that by a way of encouragement, that you think those two groups could never possibly work together, and yet they are, and they're finding mutual respect with one another. Started out with a focus on a reef system to protect our coastline on the ocean. But as we learn more and talk to Dr. Goodrow, we learned that he also does reefs in rivers and lagoons. And so we've really turned the focus to the lagoon, because that is such an immediate problem. So that's the... His presentation will focus mostly on that. Brian LaPointe will give us kind of an update on the state of the lagoon, our part of the lagoon, from the Volusia County line all the way up to Ormond Beach. And then Dr. Goodrow will describe the reef system for the lagoon, that all over the world is creating rapid increases of sea grasses, fish. And it's a much simpler system than what's required for the ocean, because there's not the tidal, the waves, and it's easier for... To get zoning. So I'm just looking forward to that. I hope that you will look forward. I want the public to know it will be a public meeting. We're going to try and do it at 1:00, and as close as we can get it, because they are... It'll all be virtual for the doctors. I think there's a team of six, only two speaking, but they're not... One of them is in... They're in other parts of the world, and Brian LaPointe is currently doing a study in Key West, so he'll be zooming in from there. But it'll be very worthwhile. I hope the public will tune in and listen to it, and I want the council to have good notice, so they can have questions. So with that, I'll... And I don't see anybody else. We'll adjourn until 6:00 PM for item... What is it? 14, the final public hearing for setting millage rates and budget resolution. So thank you very much. And counsel, there is food in the back.